Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the formal council meeting of Richmond City Council, which will now come to order. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. No, I'm sorry, I'm pushing our clerks a little too hard right now. Yes. So we'll go ahead, bring this meeting to order, and the first thing, as always, will be our invocation. Today, that invocation is by the Reverend Emory Berry Jr., who's the Senior Pastor at Fourth Baptist Church, 2800 P Street in Richmond, Virginia. Immediately following the invocation, if you will remain standing, please, for the pledge of allegiance, and we'll move forward from there. Reverend Berry, thank you for joining us tonight, sir, we appreciate it. Everyone, please rise.
You may so kindly reach for the hand closest to you. Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for a day that we've never seen before, a day that we will never see again. Gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather into this space where we might be about the business of this great city. We thank you so much that you and your divine wisdom have granted us the minds and the consciousness to be sensitive to the needs of others. We pray now that you would use our hands and use our hearts, that we might do what is in the best interest of these, your great citizens of this great Commonwealth. And so now we pray that you will be with every council member as they represent their constituencies. We pray now for a peace that passes all understanding. Most importantly, we pray that a spirit of unity would exist in this place. We are mindful today of those who have less than we have. So we call before you those who are homeless, those who are hungry, and even those who do not know what tomorrow will even bring. But we believe that you can use us to make this world a better place. So now we invite your presence into this place, and we pray that as you stand on the balcony of heaven, that your spirit was among us, that you will be pleased with what will transpire on tonight. And so we pray that the issues that are before us, the stadium, Medicaid expansion, et cetera, et cetera, would, your purpose will be done. We pray this prayer in your precious name, let all of us together say, Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please be so kind as to read the chamber emergency evacuation plan and the citizen speaker guidelines?
Upon activation of the emergency alarm systems, all persons should exit the building. Please use the exits to the left and right front of the council chambers, or the east or west stairwell outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use escalators or elevators. After exiting the building, please proceed to the area located in the parking lot boarded by Clay 8th and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizen Speaker's Guideline: Citizen wishing to speak during public hearing and/or citizen comment period generally have three minutes to speak. Person appeared before council or not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business venture, use language of a person of nature which insults or demean any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the President of Council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and future disciplinary action as necessary, which could include borrowing from attendance at future meetings of City Council for a period of six months.
Mr. President, for the record, all members of council are in attendance this evening.
Thank you very much. Would you please read the appointments and reappointments on tonight's agenda?
Yes, the first item to be considered is item number 19, and when I call your name, if you will please stand, or if you're standing, please raise your hand. Item number 19, Resolution Number 2014-R27, to appoint William H. Lighty. Mr. Lighty is present?
He does not appear.
Okay, that item number 19 will need to be continued. Next is item number 20, Resolution Number 2014-R28, to appoint Matthew E. Peanort III. Mr. Peanort? As a member of the Board of Trustees of the Richmond Retirement System for a term terminating October 25, 2016, succeeding Ronald J. Tillot. Mr. President, those are the only two appointment/reappointment items for consideration this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peanort, thank you for your willingness to serve. I think you're standing already next to Mr. Rawls, so just when it ends, please see him and go over to the clerk's office to be sworn in. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak against this appointment? Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in support of this appointment? Bringing it back to council for discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the question.
Council is voting on item number 20, Resolution Number 2014-R28. Mr. Bellows, Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, and thank you for your willingness to serve. May we please move to the awards and presentations?
Yes, the first recognition being presented by council, President Charles Samuels recognizes the first week of March as Richmond Women in Construction Week. Formed in 1953, the National Association of Women in Construction is a nonprofit professional networking organization that promotes and supports the achievement, employment, education, and success of women in the construction industry, and currently has more than 100 chapters. The focus of the National Association of Women in Construction Week in constructions -- the focus of the National Association of Women in Construction -- Women in Construction Week is to recognize and highlight women as a viable component of the construction industry. The National Association of Women in Construction, Richmond Chapter 141, was organized in 1967 to serve women living in the greater Richmond area. Over the years, the chapter, its members and supporters have worked to promote skilled trades, careers, and to foster community development through renovation and beautification projects. In order to recognize, honor, and celebrate women working in the construction industry in the greater Richmond region, and in recognition of the National Association of Women in Construction, Women in Construction Week, the Honorable Members of Richmond City Council and the Honorable Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby proclaim the first week of March 2014 as Richmond Women in Construction Week, and call this observance to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On behalf of the City of Richmond, the mayor and city council, I want to declare the first week of March Richmond Women in Construction Week. Ma'am, it's a tongue twister. May I please have a round of applause? Earlier this year, I was offered an opportunity to come and fellowship with them at one of their meetings, and got a real sense for all that they do, not just for our city, but for our region. And it's not just about building, but promoting skills, promoting folks for jobs, and to create new jobs that we in our community so desperately need. So on behalf of everything you do for our community, thank you very much. If you'd like to say something, please.
Thank you very much for this honor, we certainly appreciate it, and we enjoyed having you, and we hope that someone else from the city council will come to one of our meetings and see what we really do. Thank you.
C. Garrison for more than 28 years of dedication to the human service field. Promoted this year to serve as Regional Program Manager for the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice, Ms. Stephanie C. Garrison previously served as the Director of the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice 13th District Court Service Unit for the Richmond Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court in Richmond, where she was recognized for improving programs and therapeutic services. Dedicated to public service, Ms. Garrison has served more than 28 years in the human service field, which has included progressive positions within the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice, such as probation officer, rehabilitation counselor, and juvenile corrections officer. Richmond City Council hereby recognizes honors and celebrates Ms. Stephanie C. Garrison for more than 28 years of dedication to the human service field, and brings this to the attention of all Richmond residents, and thanks her for making to make -- helping to make Richmond and Virginia an even better place.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, members of council, those gathered, and Ms. Garrison. It is my pleasure to recognize almost three decades of serving those in need in the city of Richmond. You know, we -- some problems are a little more complicated than others, and you did not take on the low-hanging fruit of problems. These are complicated issues that require determination and valuing other people and our community as a whole. So on behalf of city council and the city, I want to thank you so much for your service, and to highlight those in the trenches that have really doing the hard work and the priority work of our city, and that is to make our city a better place for all of our citizens, particularly our young people. So thank you for your service, and we just wanted to honor it, and please feel free to let us know any of your thoughts on this.
Thank you very much. Thank you, President Samuels, members of the city council, and especially Councilman Hilbert. I am humbled and grateful that you chose to recognize my work and provide me the opportunity to present to city council over the past eight years. It was an honor to work in the Oliver Hill Courts Building and receive tremendous support from the five dedicated judges, court administrators, juvenile justice colleagues, justice service treatment providers. I thank the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice for giving me the opportunity to lead the most extraordinary court service unit in the state of Virginia, the 13th District Court Service Unit. I am most grateful to God that he gave me the opportunity to serve the resilient youth of the city of Richmond. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, I believe we have one more appointment we can take care of. Mr. Lighty?
That is correct. My understanding that he was present but had some difficulty coming in the room. That would be item number 19, Resolution Number 2014-R27, to appoint William H. Lighty as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Richmond Retirement System for a term terminating October 24, 2014, succeeding Dr. Wallace G. Harris.
Thank you. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to this appointment? Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in favor? Bringing it back to council for discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call to vote.
Council is voting on item number 19, Resolution Number 2014-R27. Mr. Bellows?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Lighty, for your service. If you can slip out the back, we would appreciate if you'd stop by the clerk's office to be sworn in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service. Madam Clerk, I believe at this point we do our agenda review and amendments. We have several changes to our agenda, one of which is the order in which we're going to hear things tonight. Because the baseball proposal is such a major issue, and there are a lot of people that are here for smaller issues on our consent agenda or to be appointed, we're going to call those items first, and then come to our regular agenda towards the end, which is the baseball paper. Madam Clerk?
The amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 1, Audit Number 2013-217 will be continued to March 24, council meeting. Item 2, Audit Number 2014-9 will be continued to March 24, council meeting. Item 3, Audit Number 2014-10 will be amended later on this evening. Item 16, Resolution Number 2013-R78 will be continued to April 24, council meeting. Item 21, Audit Number 2013-119 will be continued to March 10, council meeting. Item 22, Resolution Number 2013-R205 will be continued to March 24, council meeting. Item 23, Resolution Number 2013-R255 has been withdrawn. Item 24, Resolution Number 2013-R276 will be moved to the consent agenda. And those are the amendments I have up as far.
Any other amendments by council? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, I need a motion. Ms. Graziano, will you make a motion to amend the agenda as read?
移到
Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you very much. Usually, folks, at this point, we'd go to the regular agenda. Instead, I'd like to go to the citizen comment period so that those folks can have their say and move on. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first person?
Yes, the first speaker is James Giddings. James Giddings.
Mr. Giddings, if you're here and we don't see you, please holler so we know that you're on your way down. All right, I don't see anyone responding. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Charles Poole.
Mr. Poole?
Mr. President, and very honorable members of council, my name is Charles Poole, and I'm here with the good news, bad news situation. Parker Agelasto, our wonderful councilman, has put in a CIP budget request to rewater the James River and Conewalk Canal. This is the good news. The canal was established in 1785 by none other than George Washington, and this will be a fabulous blue way that will connect Tredeker Iron Works to Maymont. This is a -- will be a fabulous tourist draw for our city. The bad news is that Venture Richmond is currently proposing an amphitheater on the very site of the canal, and this would damage the canal. They propose removing half of the tow path. This would be devastating. The canal is on the National Register of Historic Places, and I honestly believe that this is the first time in the nation's history that a structure on the National Register has been proposed for removal because it might block the view of a rock band. This is really preposterous. This is particularly galling because Venture Richmond rents for $1 the entire Browns Island, which it rents out in turn for $4,500 a day. And yet Venture Richmond claims that there's no way that they can possibly put the largest stage on Browns Island, which is an acre larger than Tredeker Green. Venture Richmond wants more, more, more. Venture Richmond gets $2.87 million of public money every year, including a no-bid, $700,000 clean and safe program, and $1.6 million from the special tax district. We saw the previous week when Venture Richmond was even seeking exemption from the moratorium on tax exemptions. Venture Richmond, as you know, is a very group that has spent tens of thousands of dollars to try to persuade city council that digging a mammoth 28-foot hole in Chaco Bottom is the way to raise up the slave market history. At the same time, they're claiming that bulldozing the banks of the canal is the way to restore the canal. I don't think anybody believes this. City council is in control. We ask that city council please insist that the area above the canal, which is not zoned for an amphitheater, be excluded from the Venture Richmond lease, which will soon be before city council. We also ask that you delay approval of the amended Venture Richmond lease for the Tredeker property until the reviews by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources and the Corps of Engineers are complete. At this point, Venture Richmond has been browbeating the Corps of Engineers to allow them to implement the landscape plan for the amphitheater before the review is even complete, with the threat to withdraw from the reviews if that permission is not given. We ask for you to please consider the comparative resource, the rarity of the resource. There are many amphitheaters in this city. There are millions of amphitheaters throughout the United States, but there's only a handful of canals dating from the 18th century in the entire United States. And finally, please support--
Your three minutes are up. If you'd like to summarize.
Right. And finally, please support Mark Agelasto's wonderful CIP motion to fund the rewatering of the canal, so this can be a magnificent, rare tourist attraction for Richmond. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Folks, unfortunately, and I know it seems weird -- folks, please hold your applause. I know it seems weird, but one of council's rules, in order to maintain decorum in this, which is a business meeting, is that no applause is permitted except during the awards and presentations. If you guys would please hold your applause during it, I'd really appreciate it as people speak for two reasons. One, it's going to take longer, and we only have a certain amount of time set aside, which means the longer of applause between each speaker, the less speakers get to have their say. Secondly, it is against the rules, and we all ought to follow the rules. So for those reasons, I ask you would hold your applause for the rest of the meeting, and we'll deal with anything else as we come to it. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Lily Estes.
Hi, Ms. Estes. Where's Lily?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lily Estes. I have been here a couple different times, so in my coming to speak before council has really led me to some reflective comments that I seem to want to share with you. A series of reflective questions. How do you determine defining moments for the overall best interests of the majority of your constituent base? Do you know 90%, 90-plus percent of your constituent base? Do you have a plan to get to know 90% of your constituent base? Even when you have your district meetings, 100 or so people that attend doesn't compare with the thousands of people that you represent in your district. What do you see as your responsibility to the majority of the constituents that make up your district? And how do you determine the critical mass worthy for making each and every one of your How will you participate in providing more awareness for reaching your constituents? This is my earnest plea, so that we can get on with what this representative governing process is. I don't care what you call it. It could be a democracy, it could be a mobism, it could be communism, it could be Buddhism, it can be socialism, but we need to do something indecent and in order, in order to be the best that we can be for the majority of our districts and our fellow neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Estes. Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Michael Gilbert.
Good evening, President Samuels and members of council. My name is Michael Gilbert, and what a crowd we have here tonight. My insatiable curiosity has driven me to citizen comment, and I'd like to take this opportunity to think aloud on the administration and finance reports delivered to council, and subsequently, when they are made available to the public. Since my memory can't recall the answers to these offhand, I'm going to ask them rhetorically, and hopefully, I'll be able to jog my memory. But I also want to note that this very evening, we are in a city hall where the elevator to get to this council meeting doesn't work, where even if it did work, the lights for the buttons in the elevators don't work. The 10th floor Finance Department can literally not turn their lights off. They can't do it. It's hardwired, so they can't do it. The auditor cannot go in and audit the Finance Department, and yet we want to spend $80 million on a stadium, and we can't fulfill these basic needs? But let me get to my rhetorical questions. That was a side thought. When was the 2014 -- fiscal year 2014 second quarter finance report delivered to council, and was it on time? When was the first quarter 2014 finance report delivered to council, and was it on time? When was the last time the administration delivered a finance report to council on time? When was the last time the administration or Finance Department gave acceptable, confident, knowledgeable answers to a question posed instead of asking for more time to research the topic further? When was the 2013 CAFER delivered to council, and was it on time? Last year, when council was scheduled to receive the budget, was the budget delivered on time? And if I recall correctly, President Samuels, at the conclusion of the meeting, you commented, quote, "I look forward to receiving the budget in hand." At what point did the EDA or the administration inform council of the additional $1 million in cost the Redskins project was going to occur? Just a reminder, this was reflected in the March 12, 2013 minutes on the EDA website, which also stated that Jane Ferrara, Deputy Director for Economic and Community Development, as well as Carl Holston from the city's attorney's office, were present. So someone from the administration was there. When was the last time the administration had a major project that came in under budget or even at budget? When was the last time the administration worked hand-in-hand with council on a major project, that is, council was not blindsided or left in the dark on it, and Richmond's citizens overwhelmingly supported it? When was the last time a major project that came before council stood on its own, it did not have to be finagled and strong-armed, to be passed? Is my insatiable curiosity of the administration and Finance Department's inability to deliver accurate and timely reports, or for that matter, projects, the result of a one-off occurrence? Or is this a repeated patterned behavior? So I ask President Samuels and members of council, please keep these thoughts fresh in your mind throughout the evening, and in the event you recall the answers to any of them as other discussions occur tonight. And as the late, great Milton Friedman said, "There is no such thing as a free lunch." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Folks, please, no applause. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, those are all of the speakers for this evening.
Very good. May we please move on, then, to the consent agenda?
My name is James Giddings, and I was called already.
Oh, Mr. --
I'm so sorry.
Excuse me. Please continue. I didn't see you when we called your name, but you did sign up. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I've got a story to tell you all. It's a story about my children. My children are descendants of Richmond. Their grandparents were -- I'm not as elegant as these other speakers. I don't have much education. But my children have been treated poorly by this city, by the -- But my children have been treated poorly by this city, by the Department of the Police Department and the Department of Child Protective Services. And I have tried, I'm going around in circles, and they're getting swept under the table. And there are people here that I've voted for several times, through the good times and the hard times. Now, my children are descendants of slaves, as well as masters. And they deserve to be protected and watched after like any other citizen. And when they are threatened by the Police Department, and I have been threatened by the Police Department, I've been - I have been - I have been - I've had police officers threaten to arrest me. I've had my house broken into. I've had my vehicles vandalized. I've made reports. I've gotten no action whatsoever. I've written to the mayor. People were supposed to come by and check it out and make reports. Nothing. No phone calls, no anything. I've had a detective, Richmond City detective, go to a magistrate and commit perjury. Now, who do I go to for help? Who do I go to? I was recommended to speak to Mrs. Jones. No phone call back. The mayor sent a letter to me and to a detective. No phone call back.
Sir, I want to give you a chance to say what you want to say, but your three minutes are up. Would you be willing to summarize, please?
My family is not being protected. I need help. And if there is someone in here, in this body, people I've voted for, and people I've voted for in the past, that can assist me, I need some help.
Sir, there is someone here that can help. Her name is Tamika Jefferson. Ms. Jefferson, could you please wave your hand? Standing up, waving her hand. If you'll step out into the hallway and talk with her, she is with the mayor's office. She will get every piece of information she can from you to ensure that you're protected.
I got a letter from Tamika Jefferson, and she has signed a police officer to call me. Never happened.
I'll personally reach out to Ray Tarasovic. I have your information.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, that concludes the list of speakers for this evening.
Thank you very much. May we please move to the consent agenda?
The consent agenda items are as follows. Item one, ordinance number 2014-11, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the CAO to acquire at a tax delinquent judicial sale, 228 West 26th Street, and to authorize the conveyance to L. Kemp Hope for the purpose of eliminating blight and making such property available for redevelopment. Item five, ordinance number 2014-12, to adopt an amendment to the master plan for the city to incorporate the Hall Street Corridor Revitalization Plan as a part of the master Item six, ordinance number 2014-13, to authorize the CAO to submit an amendment to the city's Neighborhood Stabilization Program III Action Plan to reallocate $959,970 and to transfer and appropriate certain funds between and among various grant activities and to modify the purpose of certain appropriations. Item seven, ordinance number 2014-14, to authorize the CAO to accept $58,802.41 from Richmond Metropolitan Authority and to appropriate the amount to the Department of Public Works for the purpose of funding maintenance on the parking deck at 201 East Great Street. Item eight, ordinance number 2014-15, to amend Section 98-263 for the purpose of adding a new eligibility category for multifamily dwelling of more than eight units and accepting new construction and other improvements built on the lot that have became vacant as a result of demolition and the expense of the city of Richmond, the requirement. Item nine, ordinance number 2014-16, to amend City Code Section 106-126 for the purpose of requiring the Department of Public, the Director of Public Utilities to establish the maximum capital expenditure allowed per qualifying multifamily residential facility and per dwelling unit. Item 10, ordinance number 2014-17, to rezone 310 East Lee Street, 612 North Horse Street, and 305 East Jackson Street from the R-03 Residential Office District to the RP Resource Park District. Item 11, ordinance number 2014-18, to authorize the CAO to execute an agreement between the city and Lamos Lumas Network to install telecommunication equipment within the city's public right-of-way. Item 12, ordinance number 2014-19, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the CAO to acquire at a tax delinquent judicial sale, 1301 North 38th Street, and to authorize the conveyance to Denell Clayman for the purpose of eliminating blight and to make such property available for redevelopment. Item 13, ordinance number 2014-20, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the CAO to acquire at a tax delinquent judicial sale, 1419 Drury Street, and to authorize the conveyance to Ronise Walker for the purpose of eliminating blight and to make such property available for redevelopment. Item 14, ordinance number 2014-21, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the CAO to acquire at a tax delinquent judicial sale, 205 East 30th Street, and to authorize the conveyance to Ronise Walker for the purposes of eliminating blight and to make such property available for redevelopment. Item 15, ordinance number 2014-22, to authorize the CAO to execute an agreement between the city and Athletic 10 Conference for the purpose of hosting Athletic 10 Women's Baseball Championship. Item 17, Resolution Number 2014-R25, to approve $1,500 from the council district funds for the 5th District to make a donation to storefront for community design to conduct four community workshop sessions. Item 18, Resolution Number 2014-R26, to approve $1,865 from the council district funds for the 7th District to pay for the printing and mailing of the 7th District February newsletters. Mr. President, that's all the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to anything on the consent agenda? Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in support of anything on the consent agenda?
Could you read number three? I didn't hear it.
Number three is being continued. Bringing it back to council for any discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council is voting on the consent agenda, which consists of item 4 through 15, 17, and 18. Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelastow?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted.
Thank you very much. And folks, in case anybody missed it with the no comments portion of tonight, we just passed a resolution that asked for up to $5 million a year for affordable housing in the city of Richmond because of Ellen Robertson. And while we can't give applause, I think she deserves recognition for leading the charge on that in the Anti-Poverty Commission, and I appreciate what she did to make sure that passed unanimously. Thank you, Vice President Robertson. All right. I think, ladies and gentlemen, we're at a point where we can all be excited. Madam Clerk, oh, Madam Clerk, did you want to do one more paper, Paper 24? All right, let's do Paper 24 separate, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm sorry, 24 is also a part of the consent agenda. Item 24 is Resolution Number 2013-R276, to request that the mayor identify in his proposed annual budget for FY 2015, funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund up to the maximum amount of $5,000, $5 million for each year, for five years.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's actually the one that we were just so thrilled of Vice President Robertson for shepherding through.
Yeah.
So while it may have been a little nascent in saying that it was unanimously adopted, Lord willing, in just one moment, it will be. Are there those who wish to speak in opposition to it? Are there those who wish to speak in support of it? Bringing it back to council for discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All right, council is voting on item 24. Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelastow?
I might be confused, but was this not on the consent agenda?
It was left off by myself.
Okay, thank you. So, aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Vice President Robertson, again. Now, may we please move on to the regular agenda? Madam Clerk, I believe we just have one paper.
That is correct, and that is item number 25, Resolution Number 2014-R29. That's to express the City Council's support of further negotiations and connections with Revitalized RVA, a proposed economic revitalization and cultural heritage development project that incorporates both the Shaco Bottom and North Boulevard area of the city at a cost to the city and the Economic Development Authority not to exceed net expenditures of $79,625,000, including a new baseball stadium, a slavery and freedom heritage site, private mixed-use commercial retail and residential development, and related public infrastructure And I have several proposed amendments.
Madam Clerk, before we get to the amendments, I want to do the public comment to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. Folks, there are proposed amendments by Dr. Newbill, Mr. Blouse, and myself. I want to give you a chance to say what you want to say first. Madam Clerk, would you first please read the public speaker guidelines again, just so everyone's clear?
Yes. Citizens wishing to speak during the public hearing are not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the President of Council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary action as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future council meetings for a period of six months.
Thank you very much. As long as everybody's cool with the rules, the one other thing I want to say is, unless you're from Henraker or Chesterfield, we are all Richmonders. And regardless of our opinion on this one issue, we all are going to continue living in the same city. So I'd ask that we be respectful of each other and respectful of each other, not just as Richmonders, but as humans. Madam Clerk, excuse me. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition? And let me tell you how I'm going to do this tonight. Our rules usually dictate that each person gets three minutes to speak with a maximum of 30 minutes. That would have allowed for 10 people to speak in opposition and 10 people to speak in support, should everybody use up their full three minutes. At informal session today, when we discussed this, it was the will of council that instead we extend the public comment period for opposition and those who are proponents of this proposal to one hour each. However, we've reduced the number of minutes that each person can speak to two minutes. That allows a lot more people to speak, three times the volume, in addition to the nearly 25 public meetings we've held, plus the literally hundreds and hundreds of emails, phone calls, and letters we've received. Folks, sit tight for one second. Vice President Robertson is wondering of council if, at informal, we decided to do public comment first and then introduce any amendments, based on what folks have said. Do we want to introduce the amendments first? I know we've made this decision once. I just want to make sure we're comfortable. Or do we want to do the amendments first and then have public comments? Public comment?
Counsel President.
Public comment? Yes, sir?
Thank you. You know, I think that that is reasonable, however, given the extent of the amendments and the fact that there might be considerable changes, material changes. I think it's important to communicate that to the public prior to them making their opinion known to us, because they need information.
Why don't we do this? I'm sorry for interrupting you, Mr. Agelastow. Go ahead.
And the point is that I think that they want to have the most information to make the best informed decision when they're at the podium.
All right. Why don't we do this, then? If each council member with amendments is willing to make a summary of their amendments to the public at this point, oppositions stay up in line, please, if you would. That way, folks, everyone, please listen carefully to these. This is as important as anything else we're doing tonight. Mr. Blouse?
Thank you, Mr. President. My amendment deals with two things. One, it removes any talk of a moral obligation on the city's behalf to back any bonds. So, the repeat of what happened with the Community Development Authority does not, would not come into play here. And the other is, as far as the developer backstop and security, it adds performance bonds and personal guarantees as not quite prerequisites, but pretty close. And Mr. Hilbert had also mentioned that would include letters of credit, which would be the most solid, and that's essentially what the amendment does.
Thank you, Mr. Blouse. Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty simply, the amendment stipulates that the administration would obtain what I'm referring to here as firm financial commitments to pay the portion of the proposed budget for construction of the cultural heritage development site, not covered by the city's contribution included in the cost of this project from all sources. Such commitments should be documented at or before the time council approves the agreements described herein. And so, essentially, looking for firm commitments documented from all sources for the, to ensure the coverage of the costs for the completion of the cultural heritage development site as part of what the administration would bring back to council for review and approval.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. My amendments are as follows. The first one is almost exactly like Councilmember Blouse, with the exception of an "and" instead of an "or," so that mine requires a performance bond, personal guarantees, and other comparable and sufficient security, instead of "or" other comparable and sufficient security. I require that a complete archaeological dig has to occur before a shovel or backhoe can go in the ground, in the bottom. That is, to be paid for by the developers, but chosen by a neutral third party. An historic Richmond foundation has agreed to make that selection. Nothing could happen in the bottom until we have fully excavated and made sure that we are preserving and protecting our cultural resources in the bottom. Next, I require that before permits are, excuse me, I require that before permits are issued for development in the bottom, that a plan is created with significant- significant public input for what is going to happen on the Boulevard. Those are my... Oh, and then lastly, I require that a traffic study be conducted before any proposal is brought back to city council with current numbers and a complete study. Those are my four amendments. Now then.
Counsel President.
Mr. Agilasto.
Thank you. Those were council motions to amend. However, there's one from the administration.
Yes, there is one from the administration. Originally, when this paper had been introduced, the amount anticipated was going to be $51,000, excuse me, $51,325,000. And that was going to be on page seven in line, excuse me, page seven, subsection 1G2. That has been changed. That number now reads $76,987,500. And that was a clerical error from the original proposal that has been withdrawn. The $51 million was the proposed amount back in November when this was first introduced. The $76 million is the current anticipated value. Okay. Those in opposition that wishing to speak, two minutes each, and I'm starting us at 6:53, one hour. Ms. Price.
Thank you. I'm Scott Price. I'm here in my role as president of the Alliance for Progressive Values. We're a not-for-profit organization based here in Richmond. On behalf of our board of directors and our hundreds of members in the metropolitan area and our thousands of followers around the state, I want to tell you that we oppose this paper. We oppose the idea of a baseball park on hollowed ground in Shaco Bottom. I only have two minutes, so I'm going to, and there's a ton of people behind me who are going to elaborate on all of this. But what I want to say is, this goes to a couple of issues. One, we don't trust the numbers, give or take $25 million. We do not trust the numbers. We don't trust the way they were brought about. There's a long history of stadium projects that inflate the revenue and deflate the cost. We don't honestly trust this administration. We've seen how they do business. They go fast and loose with the facts. They bring things in prepackaged and then ram them through. There's no reason we believe that we should trust that. Secondly, and I'm going to stop and say, speaking as a historian, the idea of building a baseball park on one of the most immiserated plots of land in American history is just offensive. And we need to stop and step back and think about that. The second part of this is, I really believe this is a red herring, because I think what this comes down to is the Boulevard and what's going to happen there. And I think that is the cars behind this train, and that's where the real action's going to be. Again, on behalf of our board, on behalf of our membership, we oppose this bill. Please vote against it. I want to also point out that we will be scoring this vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Emmett Jafari. And the first thing that I realized was that all of the amendments, the amendments situation, as well as the budgetary changes, are something that the citizens should have realized and should have had in their hands so they could actually come here and be apprised of that. And so that's kind of sad, that's a sad issue there. But I wanted to speak to you as a generational Richmonder. I want to speak to you as a person who throughout my lifetime, I've been able to and been fortunate enough to travel back and forth through Shaco as a seven, eight-year-old, and even up to the time when I was a Seaboard Coastline Freight Inspector on what is now the Negro Burial Ground and down there working in the freight office down there where that is the Lumpkin Site. One of the things that I've always noticed about Shaco was the laid-back marketplace kind of atmosphere. So what I want to impress upon you as the guardians of the history and to make sure that the history comports, what we do down there, comports with what that decorum has been. I oppose having a stadium down there because that is inconsistent with the history of Shaco Bottom. And I don't just speak from that, from a brochure or what somebody told me. As I've grown up and I've been able to come and go and see what's down there, I've been able to see families. I've been able to see people come from Hanover and sell tomatoes. I've been able to see people come down there and sell venison and other quarters down there. And I don't suggest that perhaps we go back to that point, or maybe we can't go back to that point. But I will say this to you. We already have one project, which I think we earned something from, for about four weeks out of a year. Last time I heard, the squirrel season lasts about three months out of a year. So if we're talking about eradicating poverty based on a baseball diamond, I think the figures are a bit askew here. So what I would gladly submit and what I encourage council to do is walk cautiously with this one. Do what you did when you held it up for this little period of time, which gave the citizens an opportunity to put some room between being bum-rushed with this project and council having to come to some immediate agreement about whether this was proper or not.
Sir, your three minutes are up. Would you like to summarize?
Yes, sir. It's improper because it's inconsistent with the historic decorum of Shaco Bottom. Thank you.
Thank you. And folks, just so you understand, every second one person, one speaker goes over means fewer seconds down the road for somebody else. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Earl Bradley. Bring greetings. I'm speaking to you on behalf of Commonwealth Consultation LLC. Also, the Matrix Network and affiliated contractors. We oppose this simply because where are the jobs? We've been told that they will be after the fact for 100, but we know that the procurement code will allow you to, during this extended negotiating period that you're looking to vote on tonight, that you also add the job inclusiveness within this negotiation, because it makes no sense in order to have the taxpayers not be able to benefit from their own taxpayer money by being able to be awarded contracts that your own procurement code acquires and allow them to have happen. So I'm engaging you as you decide wherever the stadium's going to be. That's not my issue. My issue is the jobs, because you can't speak of poverty. The Democratic Party and Governor Terry McAulter came down here to smile in front of y'all, can't speak of jobs and not be willing to utilize the laws that you already have on the books that will allow minority participation, and matter of fact, demands and requires it. It's in the wording. It's in the wording. So Commonwealth Consultation LLC on your behalf is saying, we're extending an all branch. We're willing and want to work with you to show you where you can get the resources to do what you need to do. But don't just get caught up on where the stadium's going to be, because at the end of the day, all these folks out here still going to need a job. And them 400 that you're speaking of is not going to pass the test. We're tired of that after the fact. Include them in the master development agreement negotiations. You have that power and authority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, President City Council. I'm Kirsten Gray, and I live in the 7th District. This is round three of fighting this idea of a baseball stadium in the bottom. I currently live and grew up just blocks from this proposed development. I've dreamed of a Shaco Bottom with the return of a vibrant farmer's market, the one I frequented with my mother for fresh produce and fish. This proposed development wipes out one of the oldest markets in our nation. As a young adult, I envisioned the history brought to life and was inspired by the Holocaust Memorial in Berlin, a somber sculptural experience, a memorial that draws in millions of visitors every year. The hundreds of thousands of people who suffered because of the evil slave industry deserve such a memorial, one that would be recognized internationally. Current heritage site renderings in this proposal relegate our history, African-American history, to a glass shack on the side, not more than a visitor rest stop off the highway. This proposed stadium on Trosity is not fitting with the city grid. Words from Ed Slippick in Style. The four square blocks bounded by Broad Franklin, 18th and 16th Streets, where a void of a ball diamond is proposed, form part of the original footprint that's Richmond's founder William Byrd and William Mayer, his surveyor, laid out in 1737 for the town's original grid plan. Those blocks should be kept intact as blocks. Traffic. On numerous occasions, I've been caught in 10- to 20-minute traffic jams only blocked from my home close to 6:00 p.m. Don't tell me this development won't have an impact on Shaco Bottom for games that began at 6:30 p.m. And how often have we been caught on 95 because of traffic standstill on exit ramps? My list of reasons against the proposed stadium in the bottom is long. These are only a few. I oppose a stadium in Shaco Bottom, period. It is an insult and a waste of money. Please vote no to any legislation that would lead to this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Richard Walker, citizen of 6th District. I repeat what she just said, as well as those that came before me. But primarily, I relocated here from New Jersey, but I've been here for over 15 years. You know, Richmond's become home for me, you know. So for the most part, I can't see the reality of destroying the history of this rich city by a baseball diamond. I can't see the reality, just as Mr. Poole said, of destroying the national US-American history that can be developed, that exists in the culture, atmosphere of the city of Richmond. We're missing that. Our children that are in school now have no knowledge of Lumpkin's jail, have no knowledge of what can be. Now you're talking about building a diamond. That's all that's going to be on their mind. A diamond. And then I go back to what I said back when this originally came up. I feel like we're being held hostage by a minor league. If we don't build this stadium, they're going to leave. Why? Why not go after a major league baseball team? Then I might consider it. You know. Then to take it a step further, you know, the economy is worse outside of that district in the city of Richmond. What about the folk that are living there, homeless, that we can't even provide enough shelter, adequate shelter for? What about those individuals that are unemployed? All of these monies, these millions of dollars that are going to a third-rate baseball diamond team can be utilized for other purposes throughout our community, to enrich the lives of the humanness of the folk that reside in the city of Richmond. That gentleman did say that election is coming up soon. Your constituents are going to look at that. If you consider a baseball diamond as opposed to, where am I going to get a job from? As opposed to, where am I getting my next bill from? As opposed to, how can I get my child educated? You know, there's a regentification going on in that district already. I go back to the mayor saying, when he was a kid, he lived, he was poor, and he lived in a mixed-income environment. Why not? I didn't even hear a discussion about a mixed-income housing going down in that project. Please catch the reality of what's going on.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Folks, I'm going to ask nicely, but if I have to, we'll call a recess until everybody starts following the rules. We are literally giving people an opportunity to talk, but every second that I have to fuss about clapping or that you clap is another person who doesn't get to have their say. Yes, sir?
Mr. President, council members, my name is Al Simmons. I'm a member of the 5th voter district. This development plan gives all the financial rewards to the developers, the builders, and the landowners, while giving all the financial risk to the taxpayers. This crony capitalism does not serve all of us well, but it works very well for the developers and the landed gentry. Point two, I love baseball. I grew up playing with great enthusiasm and very little skill, but it carried me through a lot of summers so well. I remember when Jackie Robinson and Larry Doby broke the race barriers in the National and American Leagues. Their skills and their courage were an inspiration to people of goodwill everywhere. Nonetheless, baseball does not belong in the bottom. Richmond has an unhealed racial past that can only be overcome by truth and reconciliation. A properly designed and executed slave memorial offers us the possibility of a moral and spiritual renaissance radiating all the way from the bottom to the top of our human possibilities. I fear that a baseball field will only dilute those possibilities. We stand right now inside a moment that will define us as people. If we want to begin to heal, I respectfully ask you to reject this deal.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Gilbert?
The return of the insatiably curious citizen. So I just want to say that I've been thinking about some of the questions I asked earlier, and I've been meditating on them a bit, and...
I'm sorry, can you say your name for the record, please?
Mr. Gilbert, per Mr. Samuel's.
Michael Gilbert.
Thank you. I'm a little confused, because the last version of the plans I saw, which I, to my knowledge, have not been released to the public, either the Davenport Study or the Chomura Study, or any portion, which would be nice to have, there was seating capacity for 8,500 people. And I can't imagine you would build that unless you expect to fill that. But how logistically do you move 8,500 people out of Shaco Bottom? It just puzzles, I have such a simple mind, I'm sorry, but it just puzzles me. Why are you bending over backwards for a double-A baseball team? If they have the second highest or the highest attendance on the East Coast, think of all the other teams that would love to come here, that would be happy to come here. That's the worst thing. That's the worst argument to use. Are you kidding me? But the real point, the real crux of my speech here is for Jonathan, for Kathy, for Michelle, Ellen, Charles, Parker, Chris, Riva, Cynthia. I address you by your first name, not out of disrespect, but out of respect, because I voted for at least one of you, because of the district, because I see you as a peer, as a friend, to represent my interests and the interests of the majority of the people in this room. And look around. Think of the people who make up Richmond. Think of the people who wait on you, who cook your food, who brew your coffee, who are the real working folks that are in this very room. And take a hard look and see where they're standing and what side they're on, because you represent their interests. And it's not hard to see who supposedly loves RVA and who is RVA. Thank you.
Finally. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council. My name is Ansley Perkins. As a city taxpayer, I was offended by the administration's remarks that I am against this proposal because I am a white woman and I am anti-development. What I am against is the continued use of significant taxpayer dollars being thrown at yet another boondoggle sports venture when our city schools continue to be at crisis level. We had the worst graduation rate in the state last year. 27% did not graduate. Some of our schools posted the lowest SOL scores, and our long-term student absences were in the triple digits, never mind the lack of ADA compliance in these schools. I'm sure many of us read a former school board member's letter about not only the school's failing academic system, but the failing athletic program. It appears there is little doubt that the public would like to see the creation of the slavery heritage site. We have a painful history that is unique to Richmond and could provide a powerful memorial to that history. We should be bold in our thinking, create a world-class museum that details and honors this slave history and complements this city's unique Civil War history. It is unclear whether the current proposal could create such a world-class site. About a year ago, there was a lot of public debate about the creation of a children's hospital. The research shows that the most successful children's hospitals are teaching hospitals co-located with an academic university. This hospital could also greatly improve the utilization of Main Street Station without new construction. Perhaps discussion and consideration should be given to a children's hospital at this location instead of a minor league baseball stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. I'm glad you did get a chance to comment publicly.
Papers.
Dr. Davis, how are you this evening? Dr. Allen, I'm sorry.
I'm great, thank you. My name is Dr. Kim Allen, and good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and members of council. I am adamantly opposed to the creation of a ballpark in Shaco Bottom, and I urge you likewise to vote no. And I'm so pleased to hear Councilman Samuel, President Samuel's amendments regarding the archaeology of the site, because those are comments that I have for you tonight. Shaco Bottom is rich in sites designated historically significant by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. The Lumpkin's jail site and the African burial ground are among them. There are additional sites that have not yet been explored but are believed to contain archaeological and cultural resources of equal or greater significance than those. We do not know what we do not know. Several of these sites are located in the Several of these sites are located in the footprint of the proposed ballpark. Because of the irreplaceable nature and historic value of these archaeological and cultural resources, care and caution must be undertaken prior to any digging and construction. Archaeology is painstaking work. It takes months. It took five months alone to excavate the Lumpkin's Jail site, never mind the time that it took to analyze that, those artifacts. That is because these sites must be treated gingerly and with strict adherence to established protocols. That is because, once disturbed or destroyed, the site artifacts and structures and remnants cannot be made whole or restored. The aim then is the protection and stewardship of the archaeological record. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act requires agencies, federal agencies, to consider the effects of the projects they carry out, approve, or fund. I have submitted to you a list of questions regarding the timelining of the Section 106 process. I would like to receive responses to those queries, again regarding the timeline of the Section 106 process, which requires a historical assessment and any excavation of the project site.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Phil Wulado, a voter in the 4th District and editor of the Virginia Defender newspaper. When this latest attempt to put a baseball stadium in Shaco Bottom was first raised by Mr. Jack Berry from Venture Richmond and Kim Sheeler from the Greater Richmond Chamber of Commerce, in a commentary in the Richmond Times-Dispatch, they never mentioned a word about the history of Shaco Bottom. Today, the majority of opponents who are here to oppose that proposal are here because of that history. That is not the result of any education done by the city government. That's the result of community advocates who have worked tirelessly to make this an issue. And the next issue of the Virginia Defender newspaper will come out in March. It will be the first issue of our 10th year publication. The first issue came out in February 2005. The headline reads, "Shaco Bottom: Burial Ground for Negroes, Gabriel's Execution Site. It's Time to Reclaim Our Sacred Ground." This movement has legs. This movement is not going away. No matter how you vote tonight, even though your vote doesn't give the mayor any more authority to negotiate the deals, and it only says that you think that putting a stadium in Shaco Bottom is not a deal breaker in this development plan, no matter how you vote, we will be back again. We will be back when you pass the ordinances, we will be back when the earth movers come out on Shaco Bottom. We are collecting the names of people willing to lie down or stand up in front of those earth movers to prevent that development. We will be here on the opening day of the first game in the H. Louis Salamansky Dwight Jones Memorial Stadium. We will do whatever it takes to bury this proposal. It will not go away.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, President Samuels, members of the city council. My name is Breanna Mullin, and I'm the Director of Partnership for Smarter Growth. We're the only nonprofit organization in the Richmond region addressing the integrated issues of transportation, land use, housing, and the environment, among others. While we have not taken a role to decide where to put a ballpark, we have ensured that adequate comparative information has been provided to key stakeholders to allow for smart growth policy. We contacted you all last November about our concerns with the lack of public process involved in the mayor's plan for Shaco Bottom and the Boulevard, and since then, we've been working hard to increase the availability of information about the proposal to the public. We've seen the city successfully employ open, transparent processes in previous planning efforts. For example, over 700 community members participated in creating the downtown master plan. Also, the riverfront plan, approved in 2012, is the well-thought-out product of nearly a year of public input sessions. And most recently, the city provided citizens with opportunities to help program the renovation of the 17th Street Farmers Market. These efforts produced collaborative, widely-supported results that united, rather than divided, our community. While we applaud your efforts in recent months to host a number of public meetings, we remain concerned that several key pieces of comparative data are still needed in order to provide the public and city council sufficient analysis in order to make the best decision for our city. No matter which side of the debate you stand on, good public process and decision-making must be allowed to prevail. Therefore, we urge you not to pass this resolution to authorize the mayor and his staff to proceed with negotiations until the city completes a more thorough comparative and transparent planning analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin.
Mr. Jewell.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, my esteemed members of council. There's plenty of dog in this camp. I, I've been hopelessly political all my life. I served on this council eight years, but never thought I would ever see the full-court press that's been put on you all to do something that makes no sense. Number one, let's get out of the way. The fact that it is an insult, it is a desecration to even think of putting a ball field down in that bottom. There isn't a Civil War battlefield in Virginia that you could get major commercial within a three-mile radius. This is insane. What's more insulting, Mr. Marshall, is the fact that we've got, the last facilities report from schools shows $900 million worth of school construction and upgrade needs. Almost a billion dollars. The last time corporate pushed y'all into a foolish mistake was when you jacked up the tax on food to pay for a performing arts center. Who been there lately? Our Coliseum is virtually empty. Our convention center is one quarter full on a good day. We get goaded into these big debacles, these big mammoth projects by corporate who won't spend a dime to help us pay for it. Come on, y'all. You shouldn't be forced into this kind of decision. I pray that you know that you have, I thank the mayor for this, because you done woke up the people finally, who been asleep way too long. This ain't going away, and we will not forget it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Ellen Chapman, and I'm very excited, because this weekend I signed a lease in Shaco Bottom, so I'm going to be moving to the city of Richmond, and I'm really excited about that. However, this baseball stadium has been something I've been concerned about for some time, and all of these amendments that you've introduced tonight seem to be mainly dealing with the logistics and the financial details that you don't currently have to make a decision. But I would suggest that you do have principles upon which to make a final decision about this tonight. And this is how I see it, that there is some ground that is so sacred and has such historical import that it is inappropriate to build a baseball stadium, you know, the block away. Additionally, that is irresponsible and short-sighted and will run counter to our eventual tourism goals to prevent the possibility of the historic district that Parker Agostino has suggested. Another option that other people have mentioned here is that it is irresponsible to take on this extent of city debt for a private sports organization that is really not relevant to a lot of Richmonders. And then that baseball does not fit in some of the city's recommendations that it's received in the Shaco revitalization plan and other previous planning documents. Finally, the idea that there needs to not be a revitalization plan ran through without significant citizen input and control over what is going into this plan. Everything that is adjacent and addition to the baseball stadium has been suggested by the administration to get another group on board with this plan and to allow it to pass. It isn't really about addressing citizens' needs from the ground up. And finally, I think that you need to take a stand and not rubber stamp Venture Richmond and loving RBA's unethical and pressurizing advertising campaign and campaign of silence that's been going on for the last several months. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Spencer Turner. In the late '60s, when the federal government said that Richmond was essentially operating in an illegal fashion with segregation, they forced the schools to integrate. A lot of folks, the wealthiest members of our community, decided that they didn't want to be part of that community anymore, and they moved out west. They moved their kids into private schools, and they moved them into counties where they could take their money elsewhere, because they didn't really, weren't concerned with the well-being of African Americans in the city. Okay? In 1973, you know, I was born in 1973, in '78 I started into public schools. I thank my parents for choosing to put me into Richmond City Schools instead of sending me into the racist schools in the West End, in the counties. While the kids in the counties were learning to value folks like Robert E. Lee and generals in the Civil War, we were, I was learning in kindergarten and first grade about Martin Luther King. Okay? And we were learning, we had, Richmond Public Schools had a curriculum of African-American History Month before it was a national holiday. There used to be integrity in Richmond. Okay? My experience is learning about culture and the cultural curriculum I had when I was in schools inspired me to start an organization later called Virginia Center for Latin American Art. And our goal is to try to bring communities together. Okay? This is the single most divisive campaign that I have ever witnessed in my life. I was born in 1973. I lived in racism. All of a sudden, all those folks who couldn't care less about paying money into the city and giving you guys tax revenue, now they want to cash in, because the city's growing thanks to grassroots efforts, like cultural efforts in the city and groups and communities coming together. Thanks to that, which is actually what cultivated that. Now, I love a lot of the things Venture Richmond's done. They've worked hard to try to build rapport between the working and lower-class, whatever you want to call it, and the corporate community. They've thrown it all away, and I'm sad to say, they've thrown it all away, they've wasted it, on this pathetic imposition on our local democracy. So I, you know, I implore you guys, have integrity. It's your time to have integrity, because you know, you know where the mandate's coming from. It's not from the people, it's not from the logic, it's from a very tiny percentage of our local community that stand to benefit from this. So be...
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of council. My name is Laura Tussman, and I'm a resident of the 7th District. I think most of us tonight can agree that economic development is important for Shaco Bottom and for the Boulevard. And I guess you can all guess that most of us can't agree on how that should happen. Personally, I don't understand how investing $80 million in a structure that's going to be vacant for seven months out of the year is going to spur economic development in Shaco Bottom. I think there are ways that we could respectfully honor the history of Shaco Bottom while attracting increased economic development. And I'd like to see ideas that would bring people down 365 days out of the year to spend time in Shaco Bottom. And I just don't think that the paper before you tonight is the way to do it. I would urge you to vote against the paper and to encourage the administration and the developers involved to look at other ideas for ways to bring more money, more jobs into Shaco Bottom. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Montague McGruder, speaking in opposition to this travesty, this attempt of desecration of enslaved African burial grounds. And I want to first address the supporters of this plan. First of all, we're not Republicans, we're not members of the Tea Party, we do not hate progress, just to hate progress. Those who actually support this plan support plutocracy, because that is exactly what this plan is. This plan is a collusion of political and corporate power. You got three members of city council that have ties to Venture Richmond. The mayor of, the mayor of this city is the president of Venture Richmond. So this, you see this plan coming together, it's nothing more than just an attempt by corporations to use the government to siphon the wealth created by the labor of the Richmond City residents. And we got to put a stop to this. I will encourage those who support this plan currently, instead of sitting there in those seats, get up out of those seats and stand in this line. And finally, I'm going to address council. In the community meetings that were held, the opposition was basically crystal clear. Either there was 10 to 1 opposition in some districts, or the opposition was unanimous. So I think the work is basically cut out for you. So if you, if any of you are thinking about voting yes on this proposal, you might want to go ahead and think about it and ask yourselves, is this, is voting yes on this proposal worth ending my political career over? Because those who vote yes would not have to worry about higher aspirations in 2016, whether you're trying to be a judge, or you're trying to seek, trying to become mayor of the city of Richmond. Because people like me will make sure that y'all, every last one of y'all, will wrap up y'all's term on council.
Next speaker, please. And folks, just so you know, there's actually overflow room in the large conference room down the hallway. It's working great. I just confirmed that it is up and running. If anybody does want to have a seat somewhere, there is some space available. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of council. My name is John Moser. In spite of all the division brought on by this proposal, I am seeing some hopeful signs in Richmond. I attended a tour of Shaco Bottom on February 15th, organized by a group of young, local African Americans. The day was cold, it was raining, but in spite of the weather, I saw a large, mixed-race group gathered at tour sites in Shaco Bottom where African slaves were bought, sold, tortured, and buried early in our history. What I saw and felt on tour that day was a greater sense of cultural unity than I have ever experienced here in the former capital of the Confederacy. It was a unity based on appreciation of heritage. However, as positive as that experience was, I see something ominous happening with Mayor Jones' Resolution 2014-R29. I see a city where giant developers are making secret deals to suck up $80 million of bond revenue borrowed from the citizens to build a baseball stadium that few people are likely to attend on what should be an international heritage site. As this process has unfolded, I've seen a lot. Last week, at the Finance Committee meeting, I saw council members ask questions of the CAO that revealed how little they know about the deals that developers have been crafting with the city in their private meetings. I saw an administration that was keeping secrets and a city council that was not getting answers. I left the meeting wondering how council could possibly feel well-informed enough to move forward. And so the administration is now asking that you play along. Just vote yes, and all will be revealed. However, the resolution states that the ballpark is part of the plan, and that is non-negotiable. So if council approves this resolution, you are saying that you do approve of putting a ballpark in the bottom. Richmond was once the capital of the Confederacy, a name which has been difficult to live down.
Sir, would you like to summarize your time?
Yes, I will. Now, big money and crony capitalism want to pull the strings of the mayor, the mayor wants to pull the strings of city council, and the people of the city are expected to dance in step to this plan. After working so long to overcome our reputation as the capital of the Confederacy, I am surprised and shocked that anyone might consider yielding our future to this Confederacy of capitalists.
Thank you very much. And folks, once again, remember, every moment over two minutes, you're taking time away from someone else. Ms. Turner, DJ?
I'm directing this to all members of council, in particular, my representative, Charles Samuels. I can go over the list of reasons that we've gone over a million times, but I have to repeat myself to children that I work with every day. I'm not going to repeat myself to adults, because y'all know this stuff. We don't build things on land that we don't own. We don't borrow property from somebody else and pay money into that. We use the property that we have, and the property that we have at the Boulevard is already owned. The construction of this magnitude along the river, including the parking lots, will dramatically increase... dramatically increase the stormwater runoff and pollution into the river. We've worked over 30 years since the Kipone disaster to clean up that river. I see no reason why we should backstep now. The businesses in the bottom area want the ballpark because they believe it will bring them more customers. When people go to a ballgame, they go for the whole experience, which includes eating a hot dog and Cracker Jacks at the game. They don't go to the restaurants first and bring food with them. It's not allowed. They shop for souvenirs at the gift shop at the Squirrel's Nest. In the short run, the restaurants won't see much, if any change, from what they get now. However, and I put this forward as an idea, I heard another gentleman say something about an amphitheater proposal down by the canal or something. If the amphitheater can be built along the lines of Dogwood Dell in this proposed stadium area, where the patrons at Dogwood Dell come and bring their picnics, they bring outside food, that's perfectly acceptable. The restaurants would benefit tremendously from that. You could have your bought suppers that they could sell and people would take it so they could see the show. The patronage alone for that would be tremendous. There is not one simple logical reason why the Chaco Bottom area cannot have the sensible development that they want. A ballpark should not be the reason the area does or does not have a grocery store and should certainly not be the reason the slavery museum does or does not get built. The slavery museum should really be the focus here. It should be a building full of more than just a collection of artifacts and stories. It should include all of the history of slavery, as well as shedding the light on the fact that the buying and selling of human beings still goes on today. Richmond, for all of her terrible past on the slavery issue, could become the anti-human trafficking hub of the world.
Ms. Turner, your time is up. Would you like to summarize?
Yes. We love baseball. We live nine tenths of a mile from my back door to their front gate. We want them to stay, but we want a development that's responsible and multi-use and to, I think that would keep everybody happy if we would just be right where we are with a new stadium and let the Chaco area have their development the way they want it, but without the stadium.
Thank you.
Ms. Turner, would you please state your first name for the record?
Oh, I'm Liz Turner. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Kylan Murrin and I want to talk about a teacher, Luke Neal, who grew up in Richmond, attending Richmond City Schools. He taught for a quarter of a year at Richmond City School before quitting. Some of his complaints included there was no soap, no toilet paper, and black mold growing on the walls at the school, as well as an unorganized administration. He sent a letter to you all about his experience. My experience is similar. I got my job mid-year teaching when the previous teacher quit after Christmas break, which is very rare in education. I was given a budget of $500 per year to teach approximately 700 students. I was the art teacher. That is less than a dollar per student for art supplies. I had 35 students per class, where 15 or more students had IEPs. This ratio is illegal and when I asked for help, I was told there was no money for aides. This school was in its third year of not passing AYP, the SOLs. The budget of the school, the building of the school had no real walls or doors for the classrooms, which makes everything very loud and disruptive. Plexiglas was cut to install to make separate classrooms for a better learning environment to try and bring the school out of their failing SOL scores. This project put on by Altria was never completed. They came in for one day of work and then they never came back. 15 teachers from my same school resigned the year I left. My goodbye card read, "We are sad to see you go, mainly because we wish we could come with you." Hanover County puts double the amount of city budget towards the schools compared to Richmond. Tons of money towards baseball when our schools desperately need funding just doesn't add up. I was taught the phrase, "Gotta-dos before wanna-dos." The stadium seems like a wanna-do to me. Vote no for this stadium. Please first revitalize Richmond's educational system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Members of council, my name is Sarah Colita. I'm a social worker and I live in Churchill. I'd like to share why I'm opposed to the stadium in Chaco Bottom. It's a travesty to build a sports stadium on genocidal grounds. Chaco Bottom is where mothers last held their babies, where lovers last saw their partners, where cruel abuses of the body took place, and where lives were forever lost. Now, I know that the mayor's plan allows for a heritage site, but the mayor's refusal to acknowledge that a significant sector of the slave industry took place under the footprint of the stadium leads me to believe that he has no real intentions of doing justice to this site, but has merely attached the heritage site as a shoddy, last-minute attempt to sway citizens. Secondly, this is a waste of taxpayer money. Richmond needs to be investing in better infrastructure such as affordable housing, better schools, improved public transportation, and not second-rate leisure activities. Stadia are revenue suckers, not moneymakers. Furthermore, we have no guarantee that the squirrels will stay in the stadium. They can leave at any time. Then what? Even if they don't leave immediate, the lifespan of a stadium is at most 50 years? What's to come of this hulking wad of concrete left behind? A stadium cannot be converted into a school, a museum, or housing when the home of baseball comes to an end. Several people have spoken on this. This is a minor league baseball we're talking about. Who really wants this in the city? Don't get me wrong, the games are fun, people enjoy them, I enjoy them, but if Richmond is to become a destination and a world-class, or at least nationally appreciated, city, we can't be selling ourselves short with minor league baseball. The mayor is attempting to claim that the attached supermarket in this plan will make more food accessible in a food desert. It won't. There is already a supermarket in Chaco Bottom. I don't love it. It's not my favorite grocery store, but it exists. This will make a supermarket only slightly closer to the true food deserts surrounding Mosby and Creighton. Beyond construction, any jobs produced by this deal will be minimum-wage and precarious. Stadium jobs are low-paying and they're seasonal. The East End needs and deserves more than that. Mayor Jones is on a quest to privatize and overdevelop many public and private spaces that require more thoughtful and careful planning. Within the last few months, we have seen Venture Richmond and Mayor Jones propose total changes to Chaco Bottom, the redevelopment of Creighton Court that will displace hundreds as the East End gentrifies overnight, the privatization of Trediger and Brown's Island and Monroe Park, the redeveloping of the Boulevard and Hull Street in South Side. Let's slow things down and think things through before Mayor Jones wastes precious taxpayer money making a handful of Richmonders very rich and happy.
President.
Richmond is a beautiful, vibrant city.
Ma'am, you've got summers, you're taking time away from other people that want to talk.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is that what you want?
Good evening, City Council, President, Vice President. My name is Kwame Bente and I live in the 6th District. I'm not represented by anybody because of this war on drugs, I'm not able to vote at this time. So, I'm one of those people they call taxed without representation, you know, like the founding fathers, you know, had a revolt because they wasn't represented, but they were taxed to death. I'm here to speak in opposition to building a stadium in Chaco Bottom. All right? We're really wasting time right now, standing here, talking about this issue. This should have been dead a long time ago. We got more pressing issues to address in the city of Richmond and in the United States and throughout the planet than building a stadium where it makes no sense to build because of the location. It's already congested, okay? To add more traffic down, it's going to contribute to pollution, okay? Using fuel that we don't need to be using because they made hemp illegal years ago when hemp could meet all the world's energy needs and we wouldn't have environmentally-friendly fuel and not be using nuclear fuels also, okay? We have a lot of things that we need to address and a baseball field diamond down Chaco Bottom is not going to do it. We need jobs. We need vocational schools, technical schools for our youth. Our schools are falling apart. I come over here from South Side and there's potholes everywhere. You know what I'm saying? We need to be fixing up the infrastructure of this city, building schools that do not have names of Confederate soldiers that we send our children to school for. I don't think any Jew would send his child to a school after Hitler. I don't know why African people still do that same thing here in the United States. So, I'm here to oppose that and, like they say, vote for it and we will not see you here again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Robert Gabey. I'm a resident of the 2nd District and I'm an employee of Richmond Public Schools. My family's lineage carries the blood, burden, and guilt of 10 generations of participation in this transatlantic slave trade. My family's lineage carries the blood, burden, and guilt of 10 generations of participation in the transatlantic slave trade, the purchase and sale of human beings whom were granted less humanity than beats of burden. The sins of my ancestors contributed to their victims' moral decimation, forced confinement, and at times murder. The legacy of their actions is the social trauma faced by Black people in the United States of America today. This shameful legacy can be seen and heard by all, but it is felt by many every day. Council, I implore you not to bury my ancestors' sins beneath condominiums, stores, and a baseball stadium, but to divert that money to the schools so that I may better teach the children what my forefathers have done. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Claire Chu. I'm a lot of things, but I am for a historical area in Chaco Bottom and a state-of-the-art slavery museum. I just wanted to read two things really quickly. One is a piece from Richmond Times-Dispatch endorsement yesterday, and I put endorsement in quotes because it was very bizarre. Quote, "We concede that our enthusiasm remains measured. In an ideal world, the public sector would not be involved with stadiums for sports teams. Franchises should build their own venues. Stadiums and arenas do not have a sterling record regarding neighborhood revitalization and overall economic benefit. Most have failed to deliver." That was in your endorsement. The second piece I'm reading is part of a letter that's been going around on the internet that I think is really, sums a lot up. "I'm writing you this afternoon because we are at a major crossroads in the great city of Richmond. In the next couple of weeks, you will be asked to vote on a variety of issues that will weigh very heavily on the future in this city and the people within it for many decades to come. While there are a variety of different development projects, including Revitalize RVA Proposal, the Browns Island Amphitheater Plan, and the ongoing management of Monroe Park, on the table for you to soon vote on, there is a much more serious civic situation that you have a heavy burden of addressing. The yea or nay ballot that each of you will cast in regards to Mayor Jones' Chaco Stadium proposal will be a vote on much more than whether or not to build a historic site in Chaco Bottom. It has now become a yea or nay vote to validate a model of how business is to be conducted by both nonprofit organizations and well-funded commercial enterprises in the city of Richmond. Over the past four months since Mayor Jones' initial announcement of the Revitalize RVA Plan, his conduct, as well as that of Venture Richmond's in loving RVA, has been questionable at best and spinelessly manipulative at worst. To both the democratic process and the nonprofit model that has been the heart of much of RVA's lifestyle and cultural expansion over the past three to five years. On the surface, it may appear that there is a large amount of support in the form of Facebook likes and signatures from both the commercial and nonprofit sectors of the city for this plan. The reality is that many of RVA's small businesses are kept in silent, financial stranglehold around raising questions or concerns around the Revitalize RVA Plan." I'm going to give the rest off.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Katie Hamilton and I'll be finishing. Because many of our city's nonprofit organizations receive funding from major corporations such as Capital One, Bond Secures, and Altria, there has been a passive-aggressive mandate issued that if you want to keep receiving funds for your organization, you must go along with a stadium plan or risk losing some of your funding for your organization. This has been echoed by a number of different employees across many sectors under the cover of a non-admonity for feel of fiscal retribution. Many of these organizations know that building another recreational facility is not in the best interest of the city. Regardless of the mayor's blind eye to the educational issues in RVA's currently rock-bottom education system, most RVA taxpayers overwhelmingly agree that our schools and infrastructure across the entire city are the immediate priority, not a recreational, sports, and a logical design that puts a hotel right next to 7,000 screaming fans and fireworks going off at 9 o'clock at night. It doesn't take a civil engineer to understand the problems around that and many of the other of the shoddy details around financial liability and infrastructure assessments for this project. But alas, nothing can be said by many local organizations about the fear of losing much-needed funding dollars and threats of being whitelisted from certain opportunities regardless of this deal is successfully railroaded through or not. That is a detrimental and unfavorable situation for businesses, their employees, the city, our culture, and the democratic process as a whole. So, this is where you, our elected city officials, come into play. You have the authority and power to end this. You and only you have the ability to let these people and organizations within our city know that this is not the model that is appropriate for how business is to be conducted in Richmond now or ever in the future. Because if you validate their actions, empower these cultural bullies, holding many of our beloved organizations hostage, and allow the Revitalize Richmond Plan to proceed, you will undoubtedly and irreversibly debase the culture of this business, of politics in this city forever.
Next speaker, please. Hi, Ms. Henning.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Henning Davis. I'm a member of the 2nd District and I've written to you, all of you ad nauseam. I'm sure you're sick of hearing from me. And a lot of what I have said in my emails is reflected by other speakers tonight. What I'd like to address very quickly is the parking scene that is proposed there. I live, I watched David Hicks this weekend. I've been watching videos all weekend to learn more about this. And David Hicks said the other night that there was no problem at the Siegel Center with 7,000 people coming in to the middle of the city to watch a basketball game, the VCU basketball games. And I live in that district. I live very close to the Siegel Center and I beg to say that that is incorrect. Our neighborhood is clogged up every time there's a basketball game and there's nothing that people like better than free parking. You can direct them to parking deck after parking deck, but they're going to go into the neighborhoods and they're going to park where they can park for free. And there are businesses in Chaco Hill, I mean, in Churchill, places where I like to go on a Friday night for an art opening, for example, that I will probably never find a parking spot. And because there are people who are going to ignore the parking decks and they're going to go into the neighborhoods and park for free. So, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henning. Folks, just so you know, it's 7:48. At 7:53, our time will be up. So, we have five minutes left. I'm going to extend it to six minutes for three speakers. So, the next three people are available. After that, we're going to cut it off.
Mr. President, it's not fair. Whoever's in line, you let them speak. If they're in line, let them speak because I told you earlier what was going to happen. But, you know, with this many people there, they were standing in line all the way around there. So, now, you know, we didn't cut them off after two minutes. You let them go on. So, whoever's in line right now, you cut it off right there, but let everybody that's in line, let them speak.
It's the will of council.
Yes.
Mr. President, I second Ms. Trammell's sentiments.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the line is cut off.
Mr. President, this side.
Yes, Mr. President.
I concur too, but the line is cut off at this point.
Ms. Estes, are you last in line? Okay, Ms. Estes is the last speaker on the opposition. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Eva Roche. I am not from Richmond. I am not even from the United States. But I think a place where such atrocities as the killing of many enslaved people took place, it doesn't belong to a city anymore. It belongs to the whole humankind, to the whole humanity. I think one cannot go to Hiroshima, for example, and say that they want to build a ball dance where the bomb was felt dropped, or in the Berlin Wall and ask to put a soccer field there. And I think when the September 11 events took place, I remember seeing many cars with bumper stickers that say, "September 11, a date that the world should never forget." I think the burial of the enslaved people is a place and a date that the world should never forget. I think Richmond should not go to the book histories as a place that ignore its history and put a carnival in the top of its history, but a place that respect and knowledge its history and use it to promote peace.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rollins.
Hello, I'm Martha Rollins and I want to be really clear. I'm fully retired. I'm speaking as a citizen of Richmond for 50 years who lives in Bird Park. I'm a passionate advocate of this place, but I represent no organization. This last summer, my husband was stabbed and I learned a lot about wound healing and we continually refer to the wound of slavery. Let me share what I learned about wound healing. The surgeon said, "It is critical that the wound not heal from the top. It must heal from the bottom." And to do that every day, sometimes twice a day for months, the nurses would have to come in, push gauze down into the four-inch thing and leave it. And then come out and then pull it out the next time and push some more in until eventually it... it healed. It was very painful. We have finally, I would just like to say, we've put Band-Aids on the wound of slavery for all these years. We wouldn't look at it. We didn't want to know it was happening when it was happening. We really don't want to honor, it feels to me, enough of us don't want to honor and remember and heal. So I would ask us not to put a ballpark and end the chance for this to be a true healing. In 30 years from now, do we want to have a ballpark that's out of date? Or do we want to have the possibility that Richmond has moved further along in true healing of a national wound? Also, the thought that, well, there's gonna be a Heritage Center, to me, just accept that little is an accommodation. We've accommodated too long to power. We need to be bold and...
Thank you, Ms. Rollins.
Thank you.
Mr. Schentius.
I'm in awe. As I stood in the line, repeatedly I found myself choked up, at the edge of tears. I'm in awe at our city, and I want to do reverse citizens' appreciation. I want to thank this city administration, Mr. Marshall, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you, Mr. Samuels. I want to thank this council for your part in collusion with Venture Richmond as members and funding it. I want to thank you for your high-priced cheerleaders, because you've done something that 46 years of my protesting has never been able to do. You have united us. Thank you very much. I will support putting the Richmond Squirrels Baseball Stadium in Shaco Bottom when you agree to change the name to the Richmond Slaves. And instead of Nazi dancing, the squirrel dance, when a homerun's hit, we can do a chain drag down the third base line.
Next speaker, please.
How are you? My name is Ilia Aristotle Davis. I'm a homeowner in the Fourth District. He left off by saying that he was in awe, and I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed as an African American. I'm ashamed as a Christian, because we're talking about a mayor that is oh-so-powerful. But we're talking about African Americans that get the chance for leadership, and this is what we get? Mr. Marshall, I like my suits from Franco's too, Mr. Marshall. But the thing is this, is that these same individuals that are African Americans, I understand you, because these are the same individuals that are parts of 501(c)(7) clubs here in Richmond, Virginia, Club 533, where the best minds, the best African-American minds reside. And we're talking about a baseball club in Shaco Bottom, but in all of our sororities, all of our fraternities, even when it comes to the Christian church, we don't have one club in low-income areas for our young people? And this isn't even, I mean, this isn't about real economics at all. This is about raising money from a tax base. When young people, I'm connected to a people that one out of two says is seeing in the day, by the age of 23, are being arrested. But that's not an issue? I'm a part of a people where even the most educated of us, half of those, the African-American males that have degrees, can't find a job. And the most affluent of us, Mr. Marshall and Mr. Mayor, we own 1.8% of the businesses in America that employ more than one person. We don't have any supermarkets, no convenience stores, and we're talking about a $703 billion end...
Your two minutes are up. Would you like to summarize, please?
Yeah, I want to summarize too, because I'm talking about, I'm not just, I'm not just pointing the finger. I'm talking about a solution. Convenience stores in low-income areas are making an average of a million dollars a year with nothing given back to our areas. So I'm talking about a community cooperative convenience store and some real revitalization, because the last thing is this, I grew up down the bottom in Wookum, and the jobs that's gonna be offered in Shaco Bottom? I mean, we're not gonna get any of them. Thank you.
Mr. Poole. Honorable City Council members, I have not heard anybody yet address the item of the lease. I attended the Finance Committee, and the little word "lease" was added to the resolution, which was a bald-faced attempt to subvert the full needed council vote to acquire land. I would like to point out to you that some of this land is owned by a convicted felon who not only pleaded guilty to bribing a City Council member, but also pled guilty to defrauding the city out of a tax abatement. Now, in your private life, if someone defrauds you, are you going to turn around when they get out of prison and build a new house on their land? That is what they're asking you to do. The convicted felon's close business partner is Secretary of Venture Richmond. This has subverted the democratic process when the Venture Richmond has pumped tens of thousands of dollars to the benefit of its secretary into this promotion campaign. Venture Richmond, you've all seen the billboards, we've all seen the full-page ad in the City Recreational Journal, we've all seen the advertising, the petitions that Venture Richmond has paid for. Venture Richmond is a 501(c)(3), ladies and gentlemen, and by law, they're not even permitted to do this lobbying. The mayor, as you know, is president of Venture Richmond. I'm asking you to please consider how this looks. This smells like a 10-day-old fish. Where Venture Richmond is getting $2.8 million from the city and turning around and using that money against the citizens to lobbying for a development that 2/3 of the citizens do not want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Amy Altman, and I just find it rather odd that nobody has mentioned or addressed the topic of traffic and congestion, especially what's been going on in the media lately due to a bunch of prankster politicians. But how will this, how will this stadium affect the workers and rescue efforts at VCU Medical Center, which happens to be one of the best trauma hospitals on the East Coast? I worked there. I worked night shift. I worked evening shift. I worked day shift. I worked early day shift. It is extremely difficult to leave MCV, I mean, VCU Health Systems. It's really hard to leave the hospital, especially when you start heading up to Churchill. And the reason why I know that is because many of the 25,000 employees that work there park up the street. Parking is extremely expensive in that area, and in fact, unless you're pretty high up there in the ranks at MCV, you can't even park in their garage. You have to park up in Churchill. You have to walk at least six, seven city blocks up the hill to park and to drive home. At that point, after working, oh, 12, 13 hours, saving people, like I said, MCV, they have some of the best surgeons in the country, amazing research goes on. How does building a stadium support these great service workers that have probably saved members of your own families, including neonates, young people? I've worked with young people who were in major car wrecks, 16-year-olds, all day long, helping them, helping them get better. Do I want to encounter traffic and not be able to get home for an hour after serving a 12-hour shift? I don't think so. And no one has addressed that, and believe me...
Ma'am, your two minutes are up. Would you like to summarize?
I do think it will be a major problem, and it does not support our service workers at VCU Medical System that supports everyone in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes.
My name is Mr. Charles Evans Hughes, Sr. Mr. Chairman, fellow council members, no, 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 we do not want a baseball field in the bottom. It will be a waste of money for the taxpayers, just like the Sixth Street Market, Main Street Station, and many other projects the city has wasted money on. As far as a slave project or museum in the bottom, get over it. I just walked a slave trail to get to this podium, to beg for my hard-earned money not to be spent on another wasted project. In Africa right now, there are slaves and blacks killing blacks every day. If your ancestors had not been brought to America, you would not be alive today. Think on that for a while. We are our brains. If nothing is put in, nothing will come out. We have a generation of bobbleheads. Some people flick their bobbleheads and they shake their bobbleheads on this city council. The mayor flicks his finger, and they start to shake. This city is full of trash, there are half-assed street pavings, and potholes everywhere, street lights out everywhere. I called in this matter three months ago. Haven't got any help yet. The schools are terrible. Teachers have to be parents as well as teachers. And you so-called leaders want to build a ball diamond while the city is going to hell in a basket. All of the council will be gone in a few years. Your name will be forgotten. But the debt you put on the people will not be forgotten. The mayor loves Richmond so much, why is he building a church in Chesapeake? How many hired city workers belong to this church?
Please summarize.
How many department heads are not filled, making it hard to get any service from this city? I mean, anybody with any sense.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
And I hope you all soon get some.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
My name is Claire. I work with a number of grassroots organizations in the city. I believe that every person has the right to control their body and their reproduction. That was robbed from people who were trafficked through Richmond. I went to public schools, and I visited Colonial Williamsburg, and I visited Jamestown. I learned very little about the human trafficking that went on. I learned very little about the sexual violence that happened. And I believe that to place a stadium over this ground is an act of silencing. And when we do that, we steal those really important stories from kids. And I think that that act of silencing is an act of violence in and of itself.
Thank you. Ms. Estes.
Good evening again. My name is Lily Estes. I come to you today on a different subject matter, in opposition to the stadium being in Shaco Bottom. The reasoning fundamentally spiritual and humane as a foundation. The mixed-use income model for economic development does not work. I live in public housing, sat on the mayor's Anti-Poverty Commission, on the Maggie Walker Initiative for Eliminating Poverty and Expanding Opportunity. The numbers do not work. I gave this information before the Land Use Committee. We have to be very careful about, we'll build it, they'll come later. We have countless decades of that. We are not opposed to authentic, integrity-centered development. This is none of that. When you look at the renderings, the baseball stadium overshadows the Heritage Museum. It's out-the-box wrong. If we feel like this is what we can do in order to honor our ancestors, it's not going to work. We need to be really cognizant of that. Thank you. Oh, yeah, and there's some questions that someone gave me to put forward. I'm gonna type them up and email them to you all, but one question on here I thought was very telling. Why has the mayor's Tourism Commission not been consulted?
Thank you, Ms. Estes. That concludes those opposed to the program. With those who wish to speak in support of the procedure, of the proposal, please form a line and step forward. adult roar, as we do still need to move forward with our meeting. Same rules apply. Please be respectful of your fellow Richmanders. Please remember, you only have two minutes, and every second you go over possibly takes away from the time someone else may get to speak. And we have an hour to go. I have 8:10 on my clock. Yes, sir.
Good evening. To President, Adam, Vice President, and the City Council, I am Michael White, and I speak on behalf, and my perspective is that of an entertainer that I came back to Richmond, Virginia. I would like to first ask, because I know we've had so much opposition, if anyone that is for this plan, could you please stand if you are for this plan? Thank you.
All right, guys, remember the rule on the...
I speak, I speak on behalf.
Ladies and gentlemen, just one moment, just wait. Ladies and gentlemen, if I hear it again, I'm gonna recess, take all of council out of here, I will turn this building around and go back home. Now, please, I just ask you to be respectful. Booing is not respectful. We learned that before we got to kindergarten. Behave, behave like adults, please. Mr. White.
Thank you. The reason I asked for people to stand wasn't necessarily to be against the ones that were in opposition to this plan. I think there's a lot of good that comes out of this plan. As I passed through Richmond, Virginia, I left Richmond in 2009 and moved to Los Angeles. When I came back, I only had plans to be here for three days, but because of what I had noticed Richmond growing into, I've decided to make Richmond my resident again. At this point, what I see, 95, when we talk about history, 95 was one of those curses that really cursed our city, especially when you talk about Jackson Ward. Not even that, but if you drive up 95 South, you can see the beautiful city, the city line. If you notice, the city of Richmond has its back to the north. So there's nothing coming from the north that plants any imagination of what Richmond is about as people pass through. It's not just about how we feel in our community, but it's also about how us sitting in the middle of 95, one of the busiest freeways in the United States, people passing through sees our community. When they pass through, I think this diamond, not just the diamond, because I want to get away from that, because people keep saying baseball, it's so much more than just baseball that is in this plan. But the diamond, as well as the, as well as the development that will go on the Boulevard, will create a staple in people's minds that when they come through Richmond, Virginia, they'll know that progression is in progress, and it also makes us look like a city that is on the way to the top, which I really feel like we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Bullock.
Good evening. My name is Roderick Bullock. Good evening, councilman, council. I'm coming and speaking on behalf, because I've talked to several people, not only in my community, but everyone's community. And ultimately, it's the plan that I look at and I see what we can do for this community, and I have seen the vision that the mayor has... and I have seen the vision that the mayor has had, I think he takes a bad rap, because ultimately, even in the House of Delegates, he was for poverty. And I talk to people in my community, outside, everywhere, even in the county. They are for this because ultimately, the jobs, 400 jobs is a lot of jobs in people in my community. Not being able to catch and to catch the bus, using two different buses, from coming from Churchill, coming from South Side, North Side, but especially in my community in Churchill, two buses every day is uncomfortable. We don't have no type of supermarket in the down, in the bottom. And ultimately, I think that we need to look at this plan, and honestly, I look at it every day, and I see what poverty and despair I see in my community and outside of the community. And ultimately, there's no jobs. That's every, our community, especially the job market, is so thin and so fickle, and we are in influx. And I'm just sick and tired of this great white hope trying to come in our community and tell us what we need about our history. This is our history. This is something we know about. This is something that we are a part of, and this is something that I go through every day, and I got someone saying what they need and what we need, and they're doing this for me. They're not doing it for me. They're not speaking for my community. They're not speaking for my people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Yes, sir.
Members of council, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Michael Shul. I've proudly lived in the city of Richmond for 34 years, since I graduated from law school in 1979. Since moving here, I've been a corporate lawyer, representing businesses that invest in Richmond and around the world. I served the Secretary of Commerce and Trade for the Commonwealth of Virginia from 2002 to 2006, under Governor Mark Warner. In that role, I was responsible for leading Virginia's economic development and business attraction efforts. I've also served on the board of a number of other economic development boards, including the Virginia Biotech Research Park Board, the Virginia Tobacco Commission, and the Southern Growth Policies Board. I now serve on the Board of Directors of four companies that have to make tough decisions about where to invest their capital and create new jobs. I go into this detail of my experience, because I believe these 34 years of business and economic development activity have given me a particularly good insight into what it takes to attract business to our wonderful city. And that is why I speak tonight in favor of the stadium proposal that is before you. This proposal and the economic development activity it will create in Chaco Bottom and on the Boulevard will attract business to the city and will create badly needed jobs. If this proposal goes forward, the new business and the smart young people that create new businesses will see Richmond as a place that is seizing the opportunity to make new and exciting things happen in our city. Entrepreneurs want to be where the action is. These new projects will make Richmond the center of action. Existing businesses want to grow where they can offer urban amenities that help attract the best new employees. These new projects will create those amenities. Our citizens need job opportunities close to their homes and transportation routes. These new projects will create those kinds of jobs. It is very easy and safe to say no to new initiatives like the stadium project. My brother Steve is on the City Council of Durham, a place that you visited as part of this process, and he originally opposed the Durham Stadium, which he now happily recognizes he was in mistake of. That project carried risks with it. Any new project, any new idea has some risks. But the bigger risk is doing nothing.
Your 10 minutes are up. Would you like to summarize?
Yes. The bigger risk is doing nothing and letting slip the unique economic opportunity that these projects present for our city. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Darryl husband, Pastor Mont Olivet Church in Richmond, 7th District. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and specifically Councilwoman Newbill, members of the council. I did want to, it's been a long time since I've been in front of this microphone, but I did want to, I was sitting here for all of the opposition, and everybody seemed to be very polite, until the time came to, to stand for something. I did want to say this, I've been in Richmond 34 years now. This is the first time in 34 years I've ever heard this much excitement about preserving African-American history. I think it's very strange that we would talk about this when there's development going on in Chaco Bottom, or is there some other underlying thing that we've not really addressed? I do think it's important for us to protect our, the burial ground, but then again, if we're going to protect something, maybe we shouldn't build anything in Richmond, because all of Richmond, all of Virginia should be sacred. I've ridden down Monument Avenue for 34 years and seen the statues. I've been to the Confederate Museum. People share their history about things that have really pained people like me. But now, when it's time to talk about putting up a museum, we want to dedicate it to slaves. I don't think we ought to be dedicating it to slaves. We ought to be talking about history and preserving the history of people who have done great things for this country. Baseball stadium, I want to just dress for just a moment. I really believe that sports is a lost thing in Richmond. I grew up in Chicago, where we played baseball every day, every summer of the summertime, and it gave something for inner-city kids to do. For once, I was excited that inner-city kids could come, I'm gonna sum it up on this, could come to this, to see a stadium. There's something about an emotional value that cannot be judged. Pride takes a while to surface. And as these children begin to see something in their neighborhood that they can take pride in, it's gonna make a tremendous difference. Thank you for your time. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, members of City Council, my name is Charles Wilson. I come in support of the development down in the Chaco Bottom. And even though I've heard even this earlier tonight, that there are those that disrespect those that may be in support, or those that may be in opposition, it saddens me that we can't come together as a community to make a decision that's better for one another. I've learned, growing up in the Churchill part of Richmond, that you mind your own business. Whatever goes on in one person's backyard, you are not to go over in that backyard. And if you're invited into that backyard, then you best know what's going on in the backyard. There's business down in the Chaco Bottom that needs to be developed. That's the bottom line. I don't live in Chaco Bottom. I've done business in Chaco Bottom and know quite a few business owners in Chaco Bottom. I've asked a question to those business owners, how important it is to you to have development in the Chaco Bottom? And every last one of them have said, it's very important to me. I've talked to folks that live in the Chaco Bottom area, that are there by special permission, because there was never a residence down there, it was always business. But those folks have said also, we welcome the development. Why are folks coming up before City Council today, hollering about a baseball diamond, disrespecting our mayor like they disrespect our president, and have the audacity to not do your homework because you're standing here emotionally? It doesn't bother to me whether folks accept me or not, because I support the development. It don't bothers me. Because there are times when folks didn't accept me. And it still doesn't matter, the bottom line is, in Richmond, back in the '70s, when they told Richmond, Virginia, that they were not gonna let us expand no more in Chesterfield or Hinweiko, this is it. Then we had nowhere else to go. And if you can't grow, you can't go. We have to grow, Richmonders. Those that are standing behind me, understand that. We have to grow as a city. I learned that God blessed the child that God has own. When are Richmond gonna have our own? We keep borrowing from everybody else, and I'm gonna sum it up like this.
Summarize.
We need development, we need development, and we need development, not only as a city. We even need development in the 8th District. And we are looking forward to that. So again, God bless the child that God has own. We need our own.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Davey.
Hi, my name is Matthew Davey. I'm the president of the Chaco Bottom, or the Store of Chaco Valley Foundation. And our mission is to protect history and promote progress in Chaco, on behalf of our Board of Directors and a committee of over 20 businesses in Chaco. We heavily support this plan. I also want to address a few other ideas. We support this plan because it protects history with the slavery and freedom heritage site, and it promotes progress by attracting development with the stadium. I really don't need to elaborate more on that. I've emailed all of you, because my mission is not to persuade the opposition, my mission is to persuade all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davey. Mr. Napier.
Hello, it's David Napier with the Chaco Bottom Neighborhood Association. Obviously, I've not changed my support for this project. I'm excited about it. I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's not about baseball. It's about the second-story concourse that's within that ball diamond that creates all the other development opportunity, which then frees up the Boulevard, obviously. Where are the jobs, one of these speakers? Well, if you don't build it, there won't be any, so that answers that. Does anyone on council really have an opportunity, has someone brought forth a plan that can actually fund this heritage site, which is the biggest single winner of this whole project? I don't think so. I don't think it's gonna get built in any, any way near 300, or, excuse me, $30 million without this project. I mean, God bless those that are willing to give some money to it, but the big donors want to know that this project has a chance to succeed. And I'm just worried that the state will even pull its money if there's not some decisions made to get behind this and get behind it now. The amendments proposed look like it's pretty much would just kill it anyway. So, you know, your opportunity tonight is to kill it, I guess. I hope you don't do that. I'm excited about this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Napier. Mr. Ayers.
Good evening. My name is Justin Ayers. I'd like to thank the President, Madam Vice President, the council, and I'd like to thank everybody here tonight. No matter what side of this issue you're on, it shows that we are all loving this city. No matter what the campaign says, we love this city. Thank you. I'm a resident of the FAM. By way of background, I'm a recovering attorney-turned-entrepreneur. Yes, you can recover if you're an attorney. And I'm the president of the Richmond Business Alliance and a member of Leadership Metro Richmond's Class of 2014. When I first moved here five years ago, I felt like an outsider. Much of the city appeared xenophobic and unwelcoming. I jokingly told people that in 40 years, I might be considered a proper Richmonder. Over the years, I've seen new and exciting ideas take shape and gain momentum, only to eventually be dismissed or marginalized. When I asked why, people simply stated, this is Richmond. The word "no" has defined this community for too long. The phrase, "this is Richmond," should not be an impediment to change, but a celebration of everything that this city is and can be. I am here tonight to introduce a new word to the ongoing conversation about Richmond. That word is "yes." Yes, Richmond is awesome. Yes, this plan, while admittedly not perfect, does convert downtown into a thriving commercial, residential, and cultural center that not only respects history, but educates the world about Richmond's place in it. Yes, Richmond has a troubled past. Some feel that we as a community can never heal from our historical wounds. To that, I say, yes, this is Richmond, and we will heal. As Winston Churchill said, "To improve is to change, to perfect is to change often." Yes, this city often reluctant to change. However, if Richmond is to remain relevant in the 21st century, we must learn to incorporate our stewardship of history with our responsibility to this region's future. Yes, this plan can do the unthinkable, transform the former capital of the Confederacy into a modern city embodying the notion that historical preservation and sustainable economic development are not mutually exclusive concepts. Yes, it's time we stop driving with our gaze focused on the rearview mirror. Yes, I urge this council to vote in favor of this plan, and so we can all tell the world, yes, this is Richmond. Let's make history.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Next speaker, please.
Mr. President, my name is Calvin Librin, Jr. I'm a native Richmonder, been here all my life, 69 years. Former city employee and a retired business analyst, and I'm qualifying my statement on the basis that I'm neither for nor against this particular project. The reason I'm coming here, I'm giving use of food for thought with respect to what has happened in the past, when we had to make decisions of this magnitude. First of all, we had Sixth Street Marketplace, a failure. Richmond redevelopment of Fulton, an area where I grew up, it took 40 years for them to wind up trying to develop homes in that area, and I was displaced as a result thereof. I'm speaking in the tone of a dear friend of mine who is now deceased, that would be Earl Robinson, who came before you time and time again, vocalizing your decision-making process does not fit the mold of what we tend to do here in Richmond, Virginia. Thirdly, there was a travelers' building on Main Street, the 800 block, the city gave $300,000 to a developer out in England, displaced my business at that time, and it was a failure. The Nora School landfill project, which I happened to work with the city on, where they developed it, the methane gas process, and we, I informed them then, as a senior construction inspector for the city of Richmond, that that's a bad deal, they're putting too much weight on an old pipeline, and showing up, it broke. When it comes down to the bottom line, everything that we have done in the past that leads to failure, leads to decisions that you have to make, not one that I have to make. The Redskins Development Project, everybody that came to that particular program saw the benefit of it, but they're not looking at the negative side of it. No business profit from Richmond, the canisters and the information that was given out was by outside companies. We had a lawsuit on a hotel...
Sir, your time is up. Would you mind summarizing?
I'm summarizing right now. We had a hotel down here in the lower area, where the, you had a lawsuit there that represented. My argument to you is just to make the right decision. I don't care what do you decide, but make the right decision, and don't let your minds be clogged by the high-powered dollar. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Good evening, council. I'm Lawrence Williams. I am a resident of the 6th District Eastview area. My relatives lived, landowners on those hills just above Chaco Valley since the turn of the century, so I think I have a right to say something. Also, from a professional point of view, I've looked at the area, and it's, when you compare what could be there to areas like Charlotte, or areas like the Inner Harbor, we need to grow and become just as competitive as that. Architecturally, probably the best use of that would be a multi-use stadium, and we're not emphasizing the issue that's a multi-use stadium. When I was a little boy, the most fascinating thing you could do is go to a football game, and our culture was that football game in Richmond. Richmond Public Schools needs additional recreational facilities, places where young people can have pride and development. These type of things reinforce the historical aspects of that area. If you look at Hampton University, they have a grave facility or a monumental graveyard within 50 feet and adjacent to their stadium, and that graveyard is as big as a football field, and it gives integrity to and honor to the activities that occur in that multi-use facility. Across the street is their commons facility, and across the street from that area within 50 feet is their historic campus. We can create a historic campus down there, and we can make it a positive element. It can be Chaco Yard as a name for it. If you look at the areas like Wilmington, Delaware, I mean Wilmington, North Carolina, and you look at Charleston, those are the models of scale that we should be trying to adopt. And in that way, we can be historically correct, and if you look at the Tredega area, the population down there on today, minimal. When you have a folk festival, you have activity. So you need reinforcing elements when you work in developing a given area. And one last comment is, we have St. John's Park, it's not active now, and we can continue to have parks, but that's not generating large enough populations to be... enough populations to be useful. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Chris Malo. I'm a member of Mr. Hilbert's district. I've lived in many of the districts of the city, and I'm sure by the time I die, I'll live in every single one of them. I first wanted to thank all of you. I used to be a critic of city council and the administration in general, but the amount of work you've put in reaching out to the public, the public meetings, the reaching out to the press, the responding to my lengthy emails, I know how little the city actually pays you in salary, and the amount of work that you guys have been putting into this project to accept public input, extremely impressive. Thank you. I have two arguments, a few logical, a few from the heart. The first I want to put out is that people should not forget the benefit the Flying Squirrels are to the community. They're not just a baseball team. They are a group, they are an advocacy group for the community. Just in a few weeks, they're going to be doing a baseball glove drive for the rec department, just one of the hundreds of different things they do throughout the year to benefit the community. In terms of the logical argument, you're all smart people. We're going to be getting a world-class slavery museum. Just makes sense. We're going to be resolving a food desert. One of the main reasons why I haven't lived in Churchill yet is because there's not, there's not an adequate grocery store. This plan brings a great grocery store downtown. It's going to bring jobs closer to the people in lower income. You know, right now, there aren't that many jobs down there. This is going to increase the number of jobs that are going to be close to people so they're not going to have to drive. They can take public transportation to all these new jobs. Tax revenue makes sense. We're putting development on Boulevard. We're putting development on one of the busiest corridors of ninety-five and sixty-four, something that neither Chesfield or Henrico have. Now, the big argument is, my argument from the heart, I don't want to leave the city. Oh, time's almost up. I don't want to leave the city. This plan shows that the city's moving forward. I want to stay. I want to help create jobs. This plan does that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DuMoss.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and members of council, my name is Damas Boudreau. I'm a member of the first, a resident of the first district, and I, for these and many other reasons articulated, I urge the support of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boudreau. My apologies for calling you by your first name. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council president, madam vice president, and council people. My name is Forrest Clark, and my wife and I are city residents. We're not affiliated with, nor do we stand to financially gain from this development. Wanted to make that clear to you. As Richmond residents, we were seeking bold and decisive leadership when we helped elect our current mayor and our current council. Richmond, we believe, is on a great trajectory. We want to see these positive changes to our city continue, not only to build buildings, but to provide revenue our city desperately needs to serve the underserved of Richmond. Most of us understand a simple concept that spending for our pressing issues that were brought up by many of the speakers tonight requires revenue to come into our city. It's disingenuous to stand up here and ask for improved schools and services from our city while railing against development that generates revenue and investment in our city that's important to Richmond's growth and continued development. To best serve the needs of our city, I'm asking you to embrace bold steps forward. We can discuss a thousand alternatives, but alternatives without committed investors and stakeholders aren't plans. They're just wishful thinking. If we fail to seize this opportunity for our city, we'll continue to see the same tired story continue on that I've seen all my life. Inaction and continued delay from Richmond's true potential will continue to live on. I've asked opponents of this proposal time and time again for solutions and options to obtain these sorts of investments and provide this sort of revenue, but there's never a reply, just platitudes and endless complaints, as empty as the gravel lots that have sat vacant for more than my lifetime. I express my strong support. Please vote yes to this plan and continue moving this forward for our city. Thank you.
Mr. Clark. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. My name is Rachel Burgess, and I am a native Richmond-er and resident of the Second District. By trade, I am a researcher. I recently led the RVA study that researched how Richmond can better attract and retain young professionals. We interviewed young professionals in Richmond and young professionals in cities that we aspire to be. And with this research in mind, it is imperative that we make our downtown thrive. Yes, our city is becoming cooler and more attractive, but we haven't even tapped into our potential or where we need to be to be competitive today and in the future. When I look at this plan, I see elements that young professionals like me want. Community is what is most important to young professionals today, and this is confirmed in the research that we have conducted. And this plan allows us to engage in our downtown in new and vibrant ways that are ideal to strengthening the bonds of community that will encourage us to lay roots and stay here for the long term. Moreover, the Boulevard plan is also just as exciting, and this plan will enable young professionals to live, work, play, and shop in the urban neighborhoods where they love to live. Finally, knowing that the taxes generated from these projects will help improve schools in the city is one of the strongest factors. It will help encourage and make it more likely that young professionals, as they start to have families, will not move into the suburbs, but be able to stay in the cities in the neighborhood where they love. This vote is for today, but it is not for today. It is for the future of our city. So vote yes. Vote for the future thriving of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President and City Council, my name is Steve Uphoff, and I am the property owner of the Exxon station at Shaco Bottom. I am not the operator of that station, but I do own the land, and I have owned the land for eleven years, having purchased the land from Exxon Mobil Corporation. It is quite interesting to me that I have never been asked, my opinion, of the property that I own, that one-third of the stadium tends to be the borderline of my station. The stadium that you are proposing actually encompasses the actual boundaries of our property. So you're probably wondering where I stand in regards to your development and proposed development. Having looked at this and recognizing that I will lose this station and lose the income from the rental income from the facility, I wanted to share my opinion for you to consider. I am a developer and have large properties across the Commonwealth of Virginia. Many of those properties were closed when we acquired them from Exxon Mobil Corporation. We reinvested our dollars and reopened those stations. We took blighted sites, and we made them beautiful. We created value, and I ask you to consider the value that your proposal will create for the city of Richmond and its constituents and the population. And I ask you to consider that I will give up my property for the betterment of all the citizens, for the city of Richmond, and all of its benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Presidents Hamels, Madam Vice President, and all members of City Council. My name is Sandra Rhodes Whitehead. I'm a registered architect, and I'm also serving as president of Crew Richmond for 2014. Crew is a national organization and stands for commercial real estate women. With nearly nine thousand members nationally, our Richmond chapter has just under seventy members. The members are all professionals in various occupations that are associated with commercial real estate. We have architects, engineers, bankers, real estate attorneys, appraisers, accountants, et cetera. We had the honor recently of having Mayor Jones speak to us at one of our meetings and tell us about the vision, his vision of revitalizing RVA. And he was a fantastic speaker, and he answered many, many questions that we had. After the meeting, we called a special board meeting to discuss it further, and after much deliberation, we decided unanimously that we, the Board of Crew Richmond, will support and we want to support the development as proposed by Mayor Jones. Not only the development in Shaco Bottom, which really has so much potential, but also the development along the Boulevard. So I offer to you a letter from our Board of Directors, again, in support of this development, and if there's anything we can do to help you, we are very eager to see this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if one of you could assist her in getting that letter.
My name is Nicholas Jankitis. I'm a resident of the city. I live in Churchill. And regardless of what Ms. Newbill does tonight, she will still be our city council member. No vote is ever going to get rid of a city council member. I'm sorry, but this is not that politically charged. As I walked up, somebody said, "Oh, look, they're all wearing suits." Let's be honest, that same person said, "We're the enemy wearing suits." I'm not wearing a suit. I'm a young urban professional. I put my money where my mouth is. I bought property in the city so that way I could support the school system, so that way my boys can one day go to the same school system that everybody's decrying as horrible. Well, I realize they need money. They need my support. They need my activity. This project puts more money in the city. Somebody said that this is gentrification that's going on in Churchill and Shaco Bottom. It's not gentrification. If I'm the epitome of gentrification, that's crazy. I'm sorry. I'm a young urban professional. I'm not gentified. They say the louder you yell, the less you say.
All right, let's take a moment. Everybody, take a breath. All right, please continue, sir.
It's awesome that I stand up for this constitution on a regular basis. That's what I do for a living. I can't say what I do for a living, but that's what I do. So here I am defending these people. Oh, gosh. Hey, by the way, the baseball stadium can be used year-round. We're having a problem with Venture Richmond wanting an amphitheater in another part of the city. Well, they can use this as their amphitheater. Problem solved. Have a good day. Good luck.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Jim McCarthy. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Shaco Partnership, and I'm here this evening to provide testimony on behalf of that organization. We believe the Shaco Ball Field Facility can prove to be a successful proposition for the Richmond Flying Squirrels as well as the city. Further, the present opportunity to advance the full-scale effort for the preservation of Lumpkin's jail, the burial sites, and any other important opportunity for interpretation is a matter of equal importance to the stadium. Together, those two components can provide additional energy and accelerate further mixed-use development in the Shaco neighborhood. The historic element is very important, we think, because it offers a real particular element that enhances Richmond's important role in United States history. The partnership is also encouraged with the General Assembly's current consideration of potential funding to support the heritage development program. Through our comments tonight, the Shaco Partnership is reaffirming its earlier December seventeenth letter of support for the Revitalize RVA initiative by the mayor. We urge council to support this resolution before you tonight. Use the next several weeks or months to gain the requisite confidence city council would require to call us around a specific development program for Shaco as well as the Boulevard. Affirm what you can all be happy with in moving forward, not what you individually don't want. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Masa. I'm a public relations major graduating in 2014 from VCU. I want to speak out in support of the Shaco Stadium and Loving RVA campaign because it will create jobs at every level for the Bottom. I used to work in the Bottom. I worked right on Seventeenth Street, and I looked at that big, empty marketplace every day. And the only time that, you know, sales were boosted was when events were happening. You know, I saw, week after week, less and less people coming out to the marketplace. And, you know, speaking from both someone that wants to go into the professional field and a bartender, I think all the levels of jobs really need to be kind of thought over. We need to be able to retain the talent that VCU and Virginia Union and Virginia State, as well as the John Tyler and Jay Sarge. We need to be able to retain the talent that we are cultivating there. We need to be able to give them jobs because, you know, the majority of my peers are looking outside of Richmond after they spent four years, five years, six years, maybe eight years at VCU and in Richmond. So I think that this opportunity would be a step in the right direction to kind of lower that unemployment rate, to get graduates of both the high schools and the colleges into jobs. You know, the restaurants are only gonna, I keep hearing about restaurants and small businesses, you know, being the victim of this stadium, and I really think that those are the businesses that are going to see the most improvement from this opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, President and Vice President. My name is Brandon Singletary. I'm also a VCU future communications practitioner here in Richmond. I would like to just thank the city of Richmond myself of coming from a different area than here, for giving me opportunities to learn about its history and opportunities that exist here. And I would task everyone here to take that time, to personally take that time to go out and experience that history, because if I feel that that is lacking, being a person that worked down in the Shaco area, I didn't see that many participants of the history that people are so fond of trying to take part in and so actively fighting for. I feel that the, specifically the building of the slavery and heritage of Freedom Site, it will give the opportunity for education for the students here in Richmond as well as people coming to Richmond. I feel like that is something that we don't take enough time to engage in, as well as revitalizing and giving those people from outside the incentive of coming to Richmond, because I feel that we have to start with something, and this is a point that we can start as educators, bringing those people in, giving them opportunities and a focal point to show their students that, hey, here's where you come from, and here's where it came from, and here's where we have to go. And if you give those future educators those opportunities, that focal point of connecting with their students and the people in their courses, I feel like, number one, the aspects of education that we see issues with will not have that problem, because they will take some type of obligation to that community that they are taking from and have a feeling need to give back. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Folks, we got more speakers than we have hours again, so who is last in line to write this instrument? Please raise your hand. I have three different people, four different people raising their hands. That cannot be possible. Who is the last person in line? All right. Miss McQuinn, Delegate McQuinn, you are the last person in line. That's where we're going to cut this. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Tom Lorraine. I'm a resident of the Fifth District, and I am also a critical care RN at the trauma unit that was mentioned earlier, right next door. And as an eleven-year employee there, working nights, days, everything, twelve-hour shifts, I can say parking and traffic will not be that bad, because I leave from there all the time. We live in a city. There's going to be a little bit of traffic. It's not that bad. It's not quite twenty-five thousand employees that are leaving all at once, as was stated earlier. But I just, I had to mention that. One of the things I hear a lot from the opposition is railing against parking, the grocery store not fulfilling needs, not needing housing, all of these things. The bottom line with them is they don't want the baseball stadium. You take the baseball stadium out, all of a sudden, all those other things make sense. They're beautiful. They're great. They're all for it. So the whole argument is it's a red herring. It's the baseball stadium they don't want. Well, if the baseball stadium were being built on the Lumpkin site, on the burial ground, tearing down a physical structure that was a known slave-trading house, I wouldn't be up here speaking. But that's not- But that's not the case. And history is going to be represented through the plan that the mayor has. And I would hope it would grow, and that burial ground over there would further be developed, not just the Lumpkin site. The burial ground has been out of VCU's control for three years now, with some of the similar protesting, traveling roadshow people that were up here earlier, laying down in front of the streets, not allowing people to park. They've done nothing with it. Nothing. So I want to know where their money's coming from for this eight-block proposal that they have, and who their developers are, and what their plan is, other than just having a temper tantrum, stomping their feet, and saying, "No, you can't build the ballpark." So with that, I'm in favor for it. I ask you to vote yes. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Will Payne, and my wife and I moved here from Seattle in May of 2011. And we moved here for a few reasons, one of which was to be closer to family, but also because Richmond, we saw as a place where we could set down roots and raise our family together. So when we moved here, we moved to Chaco Slip. We moved to Chaco Slip because it was a vibrant, thriving place. And one of the things that we got to know as we lived there was how 95 and the transition into Chaco Bottom is aligned. It's, as you see the empty spaces, those empty spaces become barriers. It truly is a border into a different place. And now, my wife and I own a home in Union Hill, another neighborhood that is up and coming. It's thriving in a really positive way, and it's an exciting place to be. And so when I see this project, I see it as a knitting together of two thriving neighborhoods and giving Chaco Bottom the advantage to take advantage of urban bones that are already there, that are good bones for a city. And it's not just about a stadium. It's about bridging a line of division in the city. So I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name's Dirk Graham. I'm owner of Bottoms Up Pizza down in Chaco Bottom. We've been down there currently for 22 years. I'm for this project. Why am I for this project? I'm for anything that's development-wise that's gonna bring people down to the bottom and thus customers for me. I have roughly 80 to 90 employees whose livelihood depends on how well we do. The more people that come down here, the better it's gonna be for them. Their livelihoods depend on this issue also. Times have been tight lately. Economy's not doing so good. So I'm very much for this project. It's better to move forward than backwards and to do nothing at all. We've been down there for 22 years. I talked to my accountant the other day. Through meals checks and other taxes that we've generated for the city, Richmond has gone into the millions. So any other venture of this nature, my guess is it would do the same. Like I said, from what I understand, this project does a little something for everybody. So just to solely do it as a museum, I've been to go to the Science Museum. I love the Science Museum. But how many people does it employ? Five? You pay your ticket, you walk around, that's it. This development will employ, I'm guessing, in the hundreds. So anyway, I'm here for my employees so they can keep their jobs and pay their rent and put money on their, and put food on their tables. And I strongly urge that you consider that when you pass this, on this debate, this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Jake Howard. My family grew up in Montrose, and myself grew up in the Blackwater area. First, I want to say I understand the opposition's arguments, and I respect them. However, I feel like the best way to preserve history is to live in a present in which we are creating new histories, one where we, as youth in our generation, are continuing to build upon the lessons learned upon the past, rather than just relish on the past. As far as economic development, I feel like the stadium, as well as all the endeavors that goes along with it, will continue to create progress. And with that, like I said, my friends and my family, as well as myself, has few instabilities with jobs, not because of negligence or incompetence on our parts, however, because of owners letting us go because they can't afford to hire as many people. And with that, I believe that with the influx of jobs and economy in the area will make a more stable environment for everyone. But as far as the historical value, I feel like it's not the city's jobs or the council's job to educate our youth, my nieces and nephew, about our history. My parents educated me about the history of Richmond and my personal history, and their grandparents, and so forth and so on. I feel like it's our jobs to pass that on, not you guys'. Again, thank you for your time, and I am for the progression of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Warren Braxton. I'm a managing partner of several minority businesses in Chaco Bottom. And I actually had a well-thought-out speech for tonight. Standing in line, I was asked a question. How can a black man stand in his line to speak in favor? So my grandmother told me, "When grown folk talk, you answer them." So tonight, I'm gonna answer, how can a black man stand before this? First, because I'm a black man that grew up in the city's Randolph Village, that was blessed with enough business sense to work my way out to now I can be a business owner. And the first rule of business is, anything that you want to do, you have to find the money to support it. We want to preserve our heritage, and I think that a slave museum would be great, but we have to find the money to do it. Let's stop calling it the ballpark proposal, because baseball is just a vehicle. At the end of the day, there are a lot of development that is going on. So when we say no, let's really, really think about what we're saying no to. No one on City Council, myself, and probably 85, 90% of these people in this room are gonna be the people trying to get a job at Kroger to bag groceries, trying to get a job at the hotel to take luggage upstairs, trying to get a job working in this museum, trying to get a job to sell hot dogs at the ballpark. So when we say no, we really need to think what we're saying no to. What we're saying no to are all the people in Richmond who need jobs. We're saying no to all the mommy-pop store owners of Chaco Bottom that have held Chaco Bottom down by itself with no major development for years. So how am our black man to say yes? Because we need to support what we need to do in Chaco Bottom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Tony Adams. I'm CEO of Black Mountain LLC in Chaco Bottom. I'm from Manhattan, New York, Harlem specifically. I've been a business owner in Chaco Bottom for 14 years, respectively, and I employ six people. It's small in comparison to what they're attempting to do with regard to the baseball stadium. I sat patiently in the crowd, and I listened to the opposition, and I think people made a lot of valid points about their feelings about preserving history. But with history, we always have to move forward. Chaco Bottom has sat idle for years. You have ambulances that park on concrete. You know, we have limited businesses down there, and we're talking about a baseball stadium hotels, hotel supermarket, and we have a new farmer's market where it'd be an outdoor pavilion for multi-use purposes. And the vegetable people will still be there selling fresh fruit. It's just weird that we have a problem about moving forward in this city. I like to say specifically that I'm an African-American, and I have sensitivities about slavery, but I'm an educated person that knows that you can't live in the past. We have to live in current times. And current times is y'all are elected officials, and y'all have difficult decisions that y'all must make, and y'all have to have sensitivity to your constituents that you represent in your areas. However, the bigger picture is that we want change in Chaco Bottom, and it helps the community overall. We're not just thinking about ourselves. And when you say baseball stadium, yes, baseball is seasonal, but you have football, you have hockey, you have outdoor events that can be used in that facility. I'm an advertiser, and I'm an entertainment promoter. I would love to bring entertainment down to Chaco Bottom. And I like to say in closing, business is about tough decisions. Being an elected official is about making tough votes. But vote yes, and once you are out of office, however which may, it may go in your political career, you will be grateful that you voted yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andy Thornton. I live in Ms. Graziano's district, but I own, with my wife, we own La Differance, which is on 14th Street. I also have warehouses over on 18th Street, so I crisscross between this area where the farmer's market and the proposed ball stadium is on a daily basis. I was instrumental in trying to start Chaco, oh, actually, in starting Chaco Design District. We've had a contest called Envision This. We managed to get 27 different entries into that. We had 200 people show up, talking about how can we make the Chaco in general a better area. So there is a lot of proactivity and a lot of passion in trying to make this a wonderful destination. And we've got to be honest, right now, Chaco Bottom is fairly broken. It has a lot of potential, but if you're looking at all the broken chain-lick fences, the parking lots that are really pretty in bad shape, so there's a lot that we can do. I listen to the opposition, and in many ways, my heart agrees with many of the things that they say as far as history and honoring that. But I don't think this is a discussion that the people in opposition have a moral high ground on this. As a business owner, I certainly agree with that, and I think that getting a heritage museum to honor history is gonna come about only with dollars that are coming from the public and the private sources. I want to say just one thing, and I may get booed for this, but listening to the opposition, I was kind of dismayed by the comments about Venture Richmond especially. I actually am on the board of Venture Richmond, and you would be amazed at how much time and how many thousands of hours go into working for the city, the amount of money. Mr. Paul especially was deliberately erroneous in his statements. There is a tremendous amount of money that is given to the city by private ventures, including ourselves. They do wonderful things that you all attend, whether it be 2 Street, whether it be Easter's on Parade, whether it be Venture, excuse me, the Folk Festival. So you may disagree with some of their positions, but to take them to task as being phony capitalists and the evil guys is really erroneous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Lackey. I'm a member of the Fifth District, and I would like to say that I'm in support of this project for two reasons. First is potential. When I drive from the Fifth District anywhere and I pass through Chaco Bottom, I see potential. I see concrete slabs out there now. I see desolate areas. I see food deserts. And I see potential there for growth. I see potential for folks to spend their money down in the area. The second thing I see, or second point I have to make, is a package. I'm up here a believer of the package deal. There is a museum, there's a grocery store, a ballpark, there's a number of things that are attracted to this package deal, and I'm in support of the entire package, not one part of it, but the entire thing. I look forward to the day where I can take my family down on a Saturday, go down to the ballpark, have dinner at Bottoms Up Pizza, go to the ballpark, or before, excuse me, before going to the ballpark, go to the museum, and then captain off with the game. I look forward to that day. And then the last thing I want to say is, if you look at the picture up there that you guys stare at, it has so much potential to be extended to the right. It has so much potential to be extended to the east with the new package. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. President, council members, I'm really excited that the possible opportunity Richmond has before it. You know, the economic development aspect, the job creation, the improvement, the money it could bring to school systems, the quality of life that the city would have by this is very appealing and very much needed. And we need to compete with cities around the country. But what's really more the passion that I have, and I think many others in this room, is to tell the story, the history of what happened in Richmond, so it never happens again, because that's what history is about. It's education. It's, so history doesn't repeat itself, what happened here in Richmond. We have the opportunity to build the best, the best slave museum, one of the best museums in the United States, in the world, to have people from all over the world come here to tell that story. I think it's, that is what we have the opportunity to do. I think the surrounding area of the village is such an important part because that makes this whole plan vibrant, and it makes it succeed. It really helps so we can make the best area here and the best city possible. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Would you please state your name for the record?
Michelle Zager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Zager. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, President Samuels, and my councilwoman, Kathy Graziano. Also, Vice President Robinson. My name is Reverend Rosalynn Battle, and I'm an associate, I'm a first, a city resident. I am an Associate Minister of New Life Deliverance Tabernacle, and I stand on behalf of myself and my pastor, Reverend Dr. Robert A. Winfrey. And our church is located over in South Side, where Ms. Robinson's district is. Ms. Trauma, Ms. Newville, many of you that are sitting on the council are very much aware of the work that our ministry provides, the services that we provide in the council district. And one major role that our ministry plays in that district is that we provide services for individuals who, in most cases, would not find opportunity for work, for gainful employ. I heard someone mention earlier about someone being involved in the proposal as an ex-offender. Your body voted to not be able to address whether a person is an ex-offender or not, even in your city standards. But what I would like to say is that I'm tremendously excited to be witnessing yet another installment being made into the soil of the rich legacy of our city's history, which is the acceptance of our mayor's proposal for the Chaco Bottom Economic Development. And it is indeed, it is indeed this installment, that our city, our elected mayor, and this elected body are poised in a unique space and time that will forever positively impact its economic framework, building a more sure foundation spiritually, culturally, socially, and financially, and connecting us with the highway of this world. The mayor's proposed economic development plan for Chaco Bottom is a desire for fulfillment whose time is well at hand, and it is certainly long overdue. During this time in which we are honoring...
Ms. Adams, please summarize.
Yes, I will. I would ask you all to consider the fact that during this vack history commemorative time that we are in, a black man has stepped up, which we elected as our mayor, to leave a legacy in this city for its people. And those that I've heard opposing this proposal, what legacy have you left?
Mr. Cronenthal.
Sir, my name is Mark Cronenthal. I'm a resident of Union Hill in the Seventh District. I'm here to support the project. I live nearby. I also work in Chaco Bottom. My office, my business partners and I have chosen to relocate to Chaco. I walk there with my children on the weekends. It's a place where I would like to spend more time and money. I'm tired of driving through to get goods and services out in the county. This is a place that can really make Richmond a complete city. I would really like you all to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronenthal.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Miller. First, I'd like to thank you all for all the hard work you do. I know it is unceasing. I don't come before you as an opponent or a proponent of this plan, but there are some things I think should be addressed before it passes. In August of 2008, there was a study that found that a plan like this, without the support of the counties, would be a money loser for the city. We haven't, that was 130 pages of very thorough work. We now have a new study. It was 10 pages by a firm that stands to benefit from the bonds. And on the fourth page of that, this 10-page study now being used to promote the plan, Davenport says specifically that they did not study the comparables, absorption, or any other assumption involved in these new figures for market reasonableness. And what that means is that the city provided these numbers. They say that specifically. The city could have shown any numbers they wanted in... in this new proposal. They showed it to be much more profitable than the last. And that may be true, but there are also mistakes and omissions in the current figures being used to promote this stadium, aside from the problem with methodology. For example, the current study directly contradicts the prior study on the advisability of putting hotels at either site. The prior study found that they would not be justified based on a sixty-five percent occupancy and a hundred and twenty-five dollar daily rate. The current study said it used the same assumption, but it included both hotels. So that's clearly wrong. And the revenue for the hotel and conference center inside the hotel on the Boulevard site should be removed from the study to make it accurate. Additionally, the grocery store in the Davenport study is there whether we put the stadium on the Boulevard or in the bottom. If it's there no matter what council does, that means the revenue should not be included in the study for either proposal. So there's more revenue that should not be there. Additionally, there are other mistakes in the numbers being used to promote this study. For example-
Sir, would you mind summarizing your-
I will summarize. Thank you. Thank you very much. There are mistakes, there are omissions, and there are very large figures being used to support this, and I don't trust them. And I have looked at them very thoroughly, and I hope that you do also. Thank you. Next
speaker, please.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Honored Councilmen, my name is Reverend Dr. Marlon Haskell. I am the pastor of Chicago Avenue Baptist Church in South Richmond, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Baptist Ministers Conference of Richmond and Vicinity, where I am the president. I'm here to talk in support of the mayor's plan because we, as a conference, heard the mayor's presentation. We believe in the mayor's presentation because we believe in the vision to revitalize Richmond, Virginia. We are not architects, we're not archaeologists, we are not historians, but we are theologians. We are people who proclaim good news and hope, and we believe that this vision provides all of that, because it gives the opportunity for a desolate city such as Richmond that may be struggling financially to be able to be transformed into an oasis of hope, where opportunities may abound, where indeed things may rise, and then we can see a brighter future in the city of Richmond. We believe that the mayor is able to take those things of the past that may not have been successful and translate them into something that is positive and productive for the city of Richmond. We're here tonight, the Baptist Ministers Conference of Richmond and Vicinity, to say to those who oppose and to those who support, to let's come together and revitalize Richmond. Let's have vitality, let's have life, let's move forward. We cannot be stuck in our past. Yes, let's honor our past, but let's incorporate that into our future, and let's just move forward. We're here to say that Richmond can be revitalized. We believe that this is a plan. It may not be perfect, but we know that with a team such as you and the natives that have risen up to make their voices heard, that it can be a great plan, a great vision. We wanted a visionary leader. We have that. He cast a vision. Let's make it plain. Let's revitalize Richmond, Virginia. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Natasha House. I'm twenty-eight years old, and I work in Chaco Bottom. My husband and I live in the South Side, District Eight. Our daughter also goes to Richmond Public School. I wanted to say real quick before I made my statement that on the way up here, the same people that were talking about healing and unity, were bullying Black men, why they were coming up here in support of it, and being rude, and have been breaking the law that you set, the rules that you set. And I was wondering, if you are asking yourself, what kind of peacekeeping or morale or credibility does that show for those kind of people? I would like to see this whole plan go through because I want to see the city move forward. I'm tired of driving past decrepit parking lots. As a young person, I see this development as something that would bring my family and I to Chaco for a wholesome time as a family, and enjoy yourselves, and take pictures, and make memories. It seems as though there is always complaining that the counties get more money to fix up their side of town, while now it's the chance for Richmond to do something great for the bottom. I've listened to the project plan three times, presentation. I've listened to both sides more than once, and I agree that there are some things that should be discussed in the details, but the project as a whole is a no-brainer. It's a win-win, and it's been proven, and people that are asking questions are just redundant because it's already been answered. And I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Robert Lynch. I was born in sight of the Chaco Bottom, though I now live in Kathy's district. And I want to say, I'm for this. You know, I had my doubts at one time, but I was driving down Elwood Avenue, smashing into one pothole after the other, and it occurred to me, I had an epiphany. I'm glad the city has enough money to build a new baseball stadium for a minor league team that may or may not stay in Richmond. I think it's the only way for RVA to move forward. Despite, I know there are some people who would think that, well, since we're listed as one of, Richmond, Virginia is listed as one of the fourteen most visible cities in the world, that we were doing okay without the stadium. But I think it was just the very idea that the squirrels were going to have a stadium in Chaco Bottom that has made us so popular. The same as building, as building a practice facility for a losing football team has brought so much more business for the local people here. And I am very happy that local businesses like Kroger and Marriott will stand to make a lot of money down in the bottom. But, you know, I just think that we should be grateful for tax bases and not worry about what the citizens want. I mean, some people might think a good use-
Sir, I appreciate your sarcasm, sir, but is this in support or opposition?
Well, I understand. Now, the squirrels are going to let us in free to the games because we're helping to pay for it.
Sarcasm, but I appreciate you following the same rules everyone else had to follow.
Well, I'm sorry, but they wouldn't let me in earlier, so I just think we should be for RVA, not necessarily for Richmond, but if we love RVA, we should be for this. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is L. Shirley Harvey, and I was a city council representative when they brought some other situations or buildings that they wanted to build in town. One was the Crestar Building. The other was a fifty-two million dollar swimming pool for, basically for James U. Crop. And the same basic people that are on Richmond Venture was, at that time, called Richmond Renaissance. But I want to say this, the people who are coming here tonight, thank you so much for being here. I would love to see this place filled up all the time with the people, because it's your ideas that are supposed to make the difference, not ideas of people who purport to be here in Richmond for us. You know better what's for you than anybody else. This year, we can vote on this. We have about five hundred people in this place tonight, and when the coming year comes about and we decide to vote, we need a referendum that determines whether or not we want to keep people on this council who are going to vote for this. We are in the opposition. People live in Richmond, not buildings. We want to say so, and what goes on, you're not giving it to us. They've already made up their minds. You can talk all you want to. I was on city council. They have already made up their minds, and it doesn't make a difference. So vote them out.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Art Burton, and I am a resident of the Second District. I'm here to speak in favor of this paper that calls for continued negotiations to determine as to whether or not we should move forward with this project. As a friend of mine said, this is a defining moment for this city, and we seem to be caught between two visions, one of a hip, high-tech savvy Richmond, and one of a Richmond where we sit and we deal with our unhealed racial past, and we reconcile our differences between one another. And I'm very glad that I have my, am able to have my own vision of this city, because I'm not sure that either of these visions are for me, because I've given my life to fighting for the living, particularly the eighteen thousand children who live in poverty in this city, and their mothers and their fathers. And the idea that one day that we would build a living monument to them, see, I'm not really for any of the monuments, except they be done for those who live here who have never gotten an opportunity to have resource and opportunity and a better quality of life. I'm going to stand for the last remnant of those who were enslaved, who have never gotten their fair share, who have never gotten their point of economic pie. Just like it's okay to open up the wound of slavery, it ought to be okay to talk about Black economic development in this city. It ought to be okay for us to do a plan that not only does jobs, but franchises and business opportunities. It ought to be okay for us to talk about all of these things in a way that it benefits the last remnant of slaves and their ancestors in this city, and builds real economic wealth, real opportunity for everyone. And so I support the idea that you go and you negotiate, and you bring back something that we all can believe in, something that's going to make this city a better place, something where everyone's dreams come true, and that this should be an economic development plan for our children and our children's children, and a future that we all can share in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Janice Holly. I really didn't come planning to speak, but I got caught up in the moment while riding my bike down Broad Street, and nearly having an accident from the sand that's on the side of the road that's left from the storms that we must have in order to get through the snow. You know, I had a bright idea, if we can suck up the leaves, can we suck up some sand and recycle it and save it for next year, and sift it so we can get out the debris that we do not want. But that said, I was born and raised in Richmond, Virginia. I've been here all my life, basically, in and out. So I've been around, and I've seen other cities and other towns as well. My first address was seventeen oh six Venable Street. So when people started talking about the bottom, I said, you know, I've seen the comings and the goings for sixty-four years. I've seen a lot of change. We have a natural resource here called the James River. You know, I was disheartened when I heard that city council would not vote, you know, to develop the area. Everybody talked about the Baltimore Harbor. And so when the man who's responsible, may, rest in peace, he's dead now, proposed that, hey, you all have a natural resource. You have a river here. I think you should be doing something to develop the James River. No, we're not going to do anything to develop the James River. It floods down there all the time. We want to build the bridge. So, you know, that became Sixth Street Marketplace. With that said, this is called Restore America. All across America, we are now interested in the urban cities. We realize that we abandon a lot of natural resources and some good works and some good architectural and some good conveniences by moving to the counties. All right? It's nice to be out there in the space, but you also want the inner city to be a place to entertain, a place to travel to. But Richmond, who is Richmond? The personalities of Richmond, I don't understand. What are you planning to do with the Greyhound bus station? Okay? And what are you planning to do for children down there? And also, I had this idea when I first saw the rendition, why is it only one rendition of the plan? I'm not for the plan or against it. I just think there's room for economic growth. I also think there's room to memorialize the historical aspect and keep that, because Richmond, well, someone asked me one day down in the bottom, what is Richmond? No, I think they said, what was Virginia known for? And the first thing that came to my mind was the capital of Confederacy. I'm going to say I was lost.
Ma'am, would you mind summarizing? You've gone over here too.
Okay. So if you all reconsider the rendition, because I don't see the ballpark being on the South Side abroad, I think you have an area from the slave trail to the new jail that can be developed on the North End. And you can put a lot of things there to give weight to what it is that you want to do. I thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, City Council. My name is Monica Scripture. I am a resident of Mr. Bellows's district. And while I agree with everything my fellow proponents have said tonight, I'd like to talk to you about a parent, as a parent. I am a parent of a biracial daughter that I have raised here in Richmond. And like most parents, I have many proud moments of her, one of which was when we went to Greensboro, North Carolina, to visit the International Civil Rights Museum. I watched her as a sixth grader, eyes wide open with curiosity, as she was able to see exhibits and to pull from what she'd learned in school, and she asked questions. She was probably the most inquisitive person of our tour group. And we came back to Richmond, and I asked myself, you know, why don't we have something like that here? Why, why is there nothing like that in the city of Richmond with as rich a city as our, we are with our history? And I'd like to ask you to seriously consider this plan, because it is a package plan, and it will bring a heritage museum to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Tucker. I live here in the city of Richmond, and I think this is a wonderful plan. This plan brings a lot of things that we don't have right now. And I know later on that we all be at the table again about taxes for the schools. We need, we need money for the schools. We need money for the city. This is a way to do it. I think we just need to buckle up together and do it. I think also that the slave museum is one of the best things I have ever seen right now, to date. We cannot let this fall to the wayside. We need this plan right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Reverend Janice.
Good evening, members of council. It's a pleasure to speak to you this evening. I'm here to support wholeheartedly the mayor's proposal, proposed economic development in Chaco Bottom. I think it's a good thing for the city. I know that there's a great appetite for it, particularly in the district that I live in and represent on the Richmond School Board, which is the Eighth District. It's a wonderful opportunity for celebration and preservation. One of the misnomers about this is that it's about baseball, but it's an opportunity for us to celebrate and to preserve Richmond's rich history and to tell the story of our heritage in a calculated and in a deserving way. And so I would encourage this body to let this plan live, to let it move on, to let this resolution pass tonight, because I think that ripple effects, the positive ripple effects, will reverberate not just in Chaco Bottom but across the city. I have an opportunity to serve the children of our city on the Richmond School Board, and I know that there's been some concern with a few members of council about, council about the Arthur Ass Center and the Arlington Road property on the Boulevard. But I'm confident that the Richmond School Board is prepared to work with the council to make sure that what happens on the Boulevard will be beneficial not only to the city but also to the school system. And I'm confident that I can speak for my colleagues in that regard. I'm upstairs on the seventeenth floor right now, and we are crafting a budget to present to this body come Friday. We're hoping to finalize it by Friday. And it pains me that I have to sit there and wonder, will we be able to afford textbooks? It pains me to sit there and wonder, will we be able to repair some of our dilapidated buildings? I think that this gives us an opportunity with this development to expand the city's tax base, and this time next year perhaps, and in the years to come, we won't have to make the difficult decisions about can we do right by our children. And so I encourage this body to let this resolution pass tonight so that we can do the right thing for Richmond, which is to have development in Chaco Bottom, not just the ballpark, but grocery retail, mixed-income housing, great thing that will be a benefit-
Would you mind-
-to our city. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, would you please state your name for the record?
Derek Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Delegate McQuinn.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and members of city council. I bet you guys are glad to see me, since I'm the last person, right? I remember those days, and I just realized what I really have missed, huh? Mr. President and Madam Vice President, members of city council, I come tonight and really with mixed emotions, and especially in light of the fact of those who stand in opposition, as well as those who stand in support. And probably most of the feelings that have been shared tonight, there have been times where I've also shared those feelings. But I also come because I think I've come to a place where I've looked at what's been proposed, and I understand that with those who are supportive and those who are opposed, I think that we, this in-depth discussion are healthy as long as those who are discussing it are operating with integrity and honesty. It is my belief that a comprehensive and widespread discussion of these kind of proposals produce a much better product. And so my- And so, Mr. President and Vice President, I come with the agenda, and that is to ask the city council to move forward this effort to tell the story of the enslaved Africans. And so that 100 years from now, little girls and boys, black and white and Latino and every culture, would understand the importance of a daunting and complex story of tragedy and triumph and of sometimes forgotten and ignored history. I know that everyone would not support it, as has been shown tonight, to accomplish this. But sometimes we have to make hard decisions to get the best product. And sometimes it means making decisions that everyone would not be in favor of. It would clearly cost just for the Heritage Center alone over about $30 million for this first phase of the development of this trail. Members of city council with the business community and the financial support, we have an opportunity to make a dream come true, something that over 15 years that I've worked toward. I've prayed, I've cried, I begged, and even borrowed to help preserve this history. And so here we are. And so I come with the agenda to first give rest to the souls and the spirits of those who seek their names and seek dignity who have been forgotten. But I also come asking that generations from now, when we do this, would know that we cared and we wanted to tell them the truth about what happened and also give them some authentic history. As we tour the one and a half mile, what is absent on these authentic sites and ground is a central location for teaching and learning. The Heritage Center, the Slave Trail Enhancement, and the Future Plan, in conjunction with the mayor's overall development plan for Chaco Bottom, will enable generations to come to have that opportunity. It is a difficult decision, but this is also about give and take. And so I want to thank you, the Governor McDonald and Governor Terry McAuliffe, along with the General Assembly and the business community for their help in getting us to this point. This is a monumental opportunity to leave a legacy that I believe generations will appreciate. And when the Heritage Center is built and hopefully followed by an expansion into a museum and all the other developments, it is my hope and that I think that it's Richmond's obligation for us to do this. Now is the right time. Thank you very much for hearing us tonight.
Thank you, Deanna McQuinn. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd still ask that you hold your applause. We've heard from those in favor. We've heard from those opposed. We bring it back to council. I'm gonna suspend the rules so that we can discuss proposed amendments. What I'd like to do with councils, without council objection, is to first introduce the amendment proposed by the administration that corrects the 50-some-odd million to the $76 million proposal. Vote on that. Then we'll move forward from there to the proposal of Dr. Newbill and do that one. Then we'll move to Mr. Bilal's and then lastly do mine. Reason being, it seems like that's gonna be the easiest way to go. Without objection, suspend the rules of council for new papers being introduced or amended. We will do that. Madam Clerk, would you please read the $76 million question?
The proposed amendment to item number 25, which is resolution number 2014-R29, is as follows. Page seven, line two, after the word approximately, strike the dollar amount $51,325,000 and insert the amount $76,987,500. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment as presented. Councilor Bilal's, will you make that motion?
Council is voting on Councilor Bilal's motion to accept the amendment to item number 25 as presented. Mr. Bilal's?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Discussion? There's no discussion on amendment?
I don't, I don't, Mr. Jackson, you can help me out. I don't believe there requires any discussion.
Um, motions to amend are debatable.
Very good. Discussion on this, we'll come back to the vote in just a minute. Discussion on this proposal. Seeing none? Madam Clerk, please call the...
Counselor, I'm, sorry, I'm the one who asked for the discussion. I would just take the moment. I do think it's important to clarify exactly what this is doing because as, as most of the public knows, there was one resolution that was introduced and then that was stricken tonight. And a second resolution was introduced two weeks ago. Originally, there was a complete package that the entire amount of new valuation in Chaco Bottom would be $76,987,500. The original resolution included over $20 million in office space assessment values. That was pulled out. And therefore, the new resolution did not reflect the entire base, the entire guarantee that the city was expecting. So, you know, I think it's a very important clerical fix, but frankly, I, we're here voting on something that could have been a $25 million mistake on a resolution. So I just want to make sure that when we talk about these things, that we are going through it thoroughly because this was only caught, thankfully, by council members going through it with each other and with the administration. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agelasto. Other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper is before you.
Thank you. And at this point, Madam Clerk, what I'm gonna do is ask for each of the amendments, once they've been accepted, for us to take the paper as it is now amended and move to the next series of amendments. And then as we add amendments, they will each be amended, the paper will be amended. If we do not add the amendments, it will remain in its most recently amended state. So, having the newly amended paper in front of us, we will now move to Dr. Newbill's amendments. Dr. Newbill, would you like to resummarize or would you like to answer, just answer any questions that council members may have?
Um, I am willing to answer questions, but essentially what we're doing with this paper is ensuring that the, during the next set of deliberations that the administration will bring back findings to us on, that they come back with documented financial support and commitments, documented, sufficient to pay for the construction of the cultural heritage development project in its entirety, delineating not only the resources that local government and state government will provide and any that the developers have offered as a contribution, but the additional dollars that will get us to that $30 million approximate price tag, very concretely with letters, with firm commitments for those, for those dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Any questions by council members? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the question?
The questioner, you'd like for me to read Newbill's?
Yes.
The motion? Okay. The further amendment to item number 25, resolution number 2014-R29, is as follows. Page 10, line 21, at the beginning of the line at the paragraph seven, "The council supports continued efforts to obtain firm financial commitments to pay the portion of the proposed budget for construction of the cultural heritage development site not covered by the city's contribution included in the cost of this project with all sources, both governmental and private. Such commitments should be documented at or before the time the council approves the agreements described in paragraph one, hereof in a form and in a total amount satisfactory to the council and such that the council has reasonable assurances that the aforesaid construction will be completed within a reasonable time."
Thank you. Questions by council? Madam Clerk, call the question, please.
I'm sorry?
Would you please call the question as to whether or not council adopts these amendments?
Yes. I will need a motion for, to accept that further amendment as presented.
Okay. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Ms. Trammell?
Mr. President, you need to explain what these amendments are because I'm getting emails and people that are not able to be here because they're sick or whatever, they do not understand exactly what we're doing right now. We are not, I guess as now, we're not gonna be voting on the ballpark tonight per se. We are voting on the ordinances or the amendments.
No, ma'am. We're still voting on the resolution. But before we vote on the resolution, we're voting on whether or not to amend it. So at the end of tonight, we'll have a paper that looks substantially similar to what was introduced two weeks ago, but will be different because we will have made changes to it and then we're gonna vote on it.
And that's what we're, that's what we...
That's what we're doing right now.
On today. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to item 25 as presented. Councilor Newbill, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on the proposed amendment to item 25 as read. Mr. Bilal's?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That amendment has been made to that paper?
Wonderful. So folks in the audience, right now, we started with the mayor's paper. We made a change that the administration requested and we've made a change that Dr. Newbill requested. Our next step is Mr. Bilal's.
Thank you, Mr. President. This amendment would do two things essentially, both financially. One would remove the words "moral obligation" from the resolution. So going forward, the city, from a negotiating standpoint, will not offer a moral obligation on the bonds. And also better delineates developer security guarantees such as a performance bond, letter of credit, or a personal guarantee to make sure that the developers have some skin in the game in this as well.
Questions by council? Madam Clerk, please call the question.
The proposed amendment to item number 25, resolution number 2014-R29, is as follows. Page six, line 11, after the word "city," two, strike the text "commit its moral obligation in." Page six, line 12, after the word "support," strike the word "of." Page seven, line five, after the word "security," insert a comma followed by a clause which may include, but not limited to, "performance bonds, personal guarantees, or other comparable or sufficient securities." Page eight, line 15, after the word "security," insert a comma followed by the clause which may include, but not be limited to, "performance bonds, personal guarantees, or other comparable and sufficient securities." I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment as presented. Mr. Bilal's, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Council is voting on Councilor Bilal's motion to accept the proposed amendment as read. Mr. Bilal's?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That amendment has been accepted.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, so we went from the mayor's original proposal to the amendment that changed the dollars amount to Dr. Newbill's amendment regarding a pledge to raise the money before we start construction, to Mr. Bilal's to ensure, to eliminate the moral obligation of the city on the EDAs' bonds and to add additional protection by the city, or by the developer to keep the city taxpayer from having to be put on the hook for this if anything goes wrong. We're now at my amendments and they are admittedly substantial. Mine came about simply because of the public meetings, the emails, the phone calls, and text messages I've received and Facebook posts and Twitter feeds that I've received or smoke signals that I've received. It has divided it out into four basic areas. There is the finances. My finance amendment is exactly like Mr. Bilal's is with one exception. Instead of saying "or additional or appropriate securities," I say "and additional or appropriate security." That is the difference there. It's just an additional, like wearing belts on a suspender. That's the change there, to ensure that the taxpayer is not on the hook. If anything were to go wrong with this development deal, the city of Richmond would not be required to pick up the slack. Next is an issue regarding the Chaco Bottom heritage sites, the slavery sites. There's three slave marts where the Chaco Bottom Baseball Stadium is proposed to go. I know the older map that we were using didn't reflect that, but it's clear to me now there is, I think the Times Dispatch are pointing that out in this Sunday's paper. Because of that, I wanted to ensure that unlike other development projects where you've heard problems of the archaeologists kind of have the rumbling of the trucks behind them as they try to decide if this is important enough to save or if the digging can continue, I wanted instead to allow for the archaeologist to go forward before the digging begins to ensure that our heritage is preserved, to ensure that our antiquities are protected and a full excavation occurs before we actually begin construction. It is not meant to hinder development. It is meant to ensure that we pay homage and do right by our ancestors. Because of that, I've asked for the developers to pay for the archaeological firm. However, a neutral third party, Historic Richmond Foundation, had agreed to choose the archaeological firm, therefore erasing any need of concern about their impartiality. That's the second part of my proposal. The third part is about traffic. A lot of us have heard talk about the concerns of maybe it's not the most recent or complete traffic study that is currently before us. And that's right. And in fact, even in the plan, it proposes that there be a more complete and accurate traffic study performed. By putting this in the resolution, it makes it part of the non-negotiables with the developers that this traffic study has to occur with current numbers, real counts, and it has to be presented to council before the proposal is brought back to city council. This way, city council has the ability to see how many cars are really coming and going. Is it going to be as easy as what we've been told to this point or are there going to need to be changes made based on the volume of cars coming down to the bottom? It's about information and making sure we have the best and most current information in order to make our decision. And the last one is, quite frankly, although citywide and region-wide of importance, really is about what I've heard from my second district constituents, which is we have no idea what's going to happen on the Boulevard. None. We have some estimates of what could happen. Maybe they sound good, maybe they don't. But I hear a lot of concern from my constituents about I can't support this project because I don't know what's gonna happen in my backyard. I don't know what's gonna happen in my front yard, depending on if you're in Sherwood Park or the Fan. So I got to think about a way to try to address that situation. And I realized that as I talk to folks, it seems like a lot of people would be comfortable if they knew what was coming and had real and significant input into what was coming. That's why I've added this last piece. There is a possibility that this could delay the Chaco Bottom development, maybe by as much as three months, maybe longer. However, since we're doing the archaeological dig as the earlier part of this proposal, I didn't think it was an end-of-the-world situation. Because of that, I asked that before the permits are issued in the bottom, that a plan is prepared for what's gonna happen on the Boulevard with significant citizen input. At the end of the day, the town hall meetings are great to talk about this proposal. I really appreciate all you coming out to talk about this proposal. But if a deal is going to be done and if we are going to see redevelopment on the bottom, excuse me, on the Boulevard, we have to know what it's gonna look like before we sign off on it. And that's just the bottom line. So I've asked for there to be prepared a plan with significant citizen input to ensure that we've done that before we start digging in the bottom. Those are my four amendments. I'm happy to answer any questions by council. I see Ms. Graziano's hand. I see Mr. Agelasto's hand.
Yeah, I do. And I concur with you 100% that we need significant citizen input. But I guess my question to you is, would we want the input prior to the city going out to get proposals so that the city knows before seeking proposals what it is the citizens want on their property? And when I read this, I'm not sure if we're talking about before we go out for the proposals or are we talking about after the proposals come back, after the administration goes through, presents what they've gotten, and then we get it? I'm just trying to figure out sort of the timeline and where the best input for the citizens is. And to me, I'd rather be ahead of the, ahead of the curve than behind the curve, I'm a citizen. is. And to me, I'd rather be ahead of the curve than behind the curve, if I'm a citizen. So that's a question.
Thank you, Ms. Graziano. As I said, I think realistically, the fastest it could be done would be 90 days. Well, that's not true. The fastest it could be done to turn around the RFP, which requires citizen input, would be 90 days. With citizen input before a proposal was put forward, probably would make the proposal available at the earliest on September 1st. Realistically, it could take longer. Now, I'm not trying to ram this down anybody's throat. I'm trying to give you information that's fair and balanced.
Mr. President, just one more follow-up question. So, your idea would be that the citizen input, you would always have it afterwards, but the citizen input would come after the RFP was issued, as opposed to prior to, so that administration would have an idea of what to put in that?
In an ideal world, quite frankly, citizen input would go on before the RFP was issued, so that the administration had a better idea of what should be in the RFP. However, realistically, the administration knows that I was putting this amendment in, and I think the key thing here is to make sure that as a plan for the Boulevard develops, it is not developed and then presented to the public. It is developed with input from the public. So after the RFP, I feel very comfortable with. Mr. Agelasto?
Thank you, Council President. I do have a question on the insertion several times of provisions satisfactory to, quote, "the city." Does that need to be more specifically defined? Who's acting to determine whether the provisions are satisfactory?
Provisions, I'm sorry, provisions for...
I'm just saying, where you've got page eight, line eight, at the beginning of the line, insert Article V, provisions satisfactory to the city that will serve to protect archaeological items. And what I want to know is, who is "the city" in this regard? Is it for city council to determine whether that is satisfactory? Is it for the city chief administrative officer?
It would be, in the final proposal that's brought back to city council for a vote, there would have to be in there an agreement between the developers and the city that this archaeological dig will occur before development can begin. We would be the end decision-makers if we like the way it reads in the final proposal.
City council would.
City council would. But the administration would be the negotiators with our instructions regarding this, based on my amendment.
Okay. And you're suggesting here an archaeological or anthropological firm chosen by the Historic Richmond Foundation. From prior conversations, it's very clear that with the area in Shaco Bottom, that a Section 106 review would be appropriate. And my guess of why Historic Richmond Foundation versus going through the Department of Historic Resources that actually would be conducting the Section 106...
It would be difficult if Section 106 is not required to get the Department of Historic Resources involved. It would be easy to get the Historic Richmond Foundation involved if Section 106 is not required.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, would you please? Dr. Newville?
Just an inquiry, Mr. President. I'm assuming you want to send all of these parts forth as a packet?
Yes. The whole purpose of putting all in one amendment is that this is what I believe best protects our past while pushing forward to our future. So yes, as a packet. All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the question?
Yes, the further amendment to item number 25, resolution number 2014- R9, is as follows. Page seven, line five, after the word "security," insert a comma followed by the clause which should include, but not be limited to, performance bonds, personal guarantees, and other comparable and sufficient security. Page seven, line 22, after the semicolon, strike the word "and." Page eight, line eight, at the beginning of the line, insert the text, Roman numeral four, provisions satisfactory to the city that will serve to protect archaeological items that are or may be found on the north of Broad Street parcel that shall include an archaeological or anthropological firm chosen by the Historic Richmond Foundation, provided that the cost of such firm shall be paid for by the developers, and that no development shall begin until the firm has completed its archaeological excavation, "and." Page eight, line 21, after the word "security," insert a comma followed by the clause which should include, but not be limited to, performance bonds, personal guarantees, and other comparable and sufficient security. Page nine, line 16, after the semicolon, strike the word "and." Page nine, line 20, after the year 2017, insert the semicolon followed by the word "and." Page nine, line 21, at the beginning of the line, insert the text, Roman numeral six, provisions satisfactory to the city will serve to protect archaeological items that are or may be found on the south of Broad Street parcel that shall include an archaeological or anthropological firm chosen by the Historic Richmond Foundation, provided that the cost of such firm shall be paid by the developers, and that no development shall begin until the firm has completed its archaeological excavation. Page 11, line one, after the word "above," insert the semicolon followed by the clause, provided that prior to the time the ordinance described in paragraph one above is presented to council, a full new study of the anticipated effects of the Shaco development on traffic that uses current data will be presented for review by the council. Page 11, line 11, after the word "track," insert a comma followed by the text, which process must include sufficient citizen input. The aforementioned development proposal process must be completed, and the results provided to the council prior to the issuance of permits for construction on either the north of Broad Street parcel or the south of Broad Street parcel. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as presented. Counsel, President Samuels, will you make that motion?
Yes, so moved.
Counsel is voting on President Samuels' motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
No.
Ms. Graziano?
No.
Ms. Mosby?
No.
Mr. Agelasto?
Yes.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
No.
Vice President Robertson?
No.
President Samuels?
Yes.
That motion has failed and has not been adopted.
Very good. Folks, what this means is the paper reverts back to the most recent version, which is all the amendments adopted up to the amendments I proposed. So the administration's, Dr. Newville's, and Mr. Bilalz are still in the paper. It doesn't revert back to its original form. All right. Now that all the amendments have been taken care of, I believe we're in a posture where we can vote on this newly amended paper.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Agelasto.
We can pick an oral amendment?
We may.
So we can always entertain as many amendments as we want?
You're going to kill me, Mr. Agelasto.
I'm just saying, we have the ability to continue to amend whether we have it in writing form or not as a procedure. However, I'm just articulating that so that the public knows that, you know, I wanted to preserve the Westham Train Station that is located over on the Boulevard and have it relocated. I could put a provision in there, and this, that, and the other, and we could nitpick this resolution to death. And I just want to make sure that the public is aware that we have that ability, but I will not be introducing any additional amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. And folks, just, Mr. Agelasto, I owe you a drink afterwards. Ladies and gentlemen, after this, please understand that any council member at any point can make a motion to amend a paper. So these can keep on coming should any council person so desire. Madam Clerk, we have before us an amended paper. Are there any council members that would like to make comment on the amended paper? I know Vice President Robertson has said yes. Do I see others? Vice President Robertson, would you like to use your privilege to go first? All right. Who would like to go first? Mr. Agelasto?
No, I just, I commend my colleagues on council for making amendments to the resolution. I think as it came forth, it made our colleagues very uneasy about certain provisions. There was quite a lot of talk about preserving history, and what the finances looked like, and what does the infrastructure look like, traffic, et cetera. And I think council has fully vetted those issues, and has, at this point, fully supported introducing amendments to the original proposal, so that it becomes a stronger proposal. However, I think it's a question as to what does that do. I think it, first of all, sends the message that the proposal as presented wasn't completely satisfactory initially. And I think we need to be very cognizant, and I think that the public needs to recognize that council has been very diligent to get somewhere that they at least feel that they can move forward. So with that, I will let council accept the amendments how they choose to accept them. But in the end, it still is a resolution. None of it's binding. It just says, this is the will of council. In the end, the city administration can still do any negotiation that it wants to. It can accept the amendments or reject the amendments. If the resolution is approved, they can move forward. If the resolution is rejected, they can move forward. That's the nature of a resolution. So I just want to make sure that that's fairly clear to my colleagues, and I will cede my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agelasto. Who else would like to speak? I see Ms. Graziano, then Ms. Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin, what I wanted to say, I just want to say the importance of this project, or of us developing the land that we have, came to me today. I painted a bedroom this weekend, which is great, but now I have to buy new linens. So now, I went to one store in the city which did not have what I wanted. So now, tomorrow or the next day, I will go to the county, because that's where the retail is. And that's what this paper is about. It's about establishing a place where I can get my car and go drive to a retail establishment and buy goods that presently I have to go to the county for. But this resolution before us is not about being in favor or against the redevelopment of the Bottom and the Boulevard. It is about getting the information necessary for us to make an informed decision. As a city, we are landlocked. Much of our property is already developed, and our opportunities to increase revenue are very limited. Just this year, we already have requests of over $10 million to add to the budget that we approved last year. And that does not take into account other requests that will be forthcoming. How do we adequately fund schools, poverty, affordable housing, public safety, and other services? How do we remain competitive with the surrounding counties in attracting businesses, residents, and employees? Attracting new revenues is the answer. The city council has before it an opportunity that may increase revenues, provide retail for our citizens, and develop an area in the city that is presently non-revenue producing, and quite frankly, an eyesore. In addition, it will give us the ability to develop our most valuable real estate, the Boulevard. Without infrastructure improvements, the Bottom will remain a depressed area. Even if we had the resources to improve the historic land and develop a heritage site, the uninviting atmosphere of the area would discourage visitors. I cannot today support the overall proposal, because we have no hard numbers and no guarantees. I do support today's resolution, giving the administration the ability to negotiate and come back to council with numbers and risks. Once this is before us, I will then be in a position to make my decision on the development. This discussion is not about process. This is about what is in the best interest of the city. I ran for council to make a positive difference in my community. We were all elected to make informed decisions on issues coming before us. We were elected to lead. Some decisions are easy, others, such as this, are more difficult. Thinking out of the box is not always easy. At the end of the day, we must vote for what we think is in the best long-term interests of the city. I look forward to receiving the facts and giving the administration the opportunity to return to us with hardened numbers. I plan to vote in favor of this resolution, so that my colleagues and the public will have the information necessary to make a decision. Thank you.
Ms. Mosby?
I probably am going to utilize my five minutes.
All right. Honor, please.
I first want to thank everybody for coming. That's the first thing. Whatever side you're on, I want to thank you. And I would hope that this would not be the only time that we would have this type of togetherness. I believe that we should make our voices be heard, and I know that you would think, well, it doesn't matter. It does matter. It really, really does matter. When I ran for council, I did it because I like helping people. I love it. I wanted to help the jobless, the homeless, the ex-offender, the school system, the ninth district, and Richmond as a whole. This job opened the door for me to do it on a broader scale. I sit back and I listen to a lot of things that are said about council. But since I've been on council, I've seen that together, we've done bear in the box. I've seen together that a $5 million a year in a budget for affordable housing. I've seen together that we've allowed 2% raises for our police that hadn't gotten in three years. Together, even though I wasn't here to vote for the Redskins, it did bring some type of revenue, and the young people in my district, Parker's district, and other districts got a chance to meet some people they wouldn't have never gotten to meet. They met those people. They shook their hand. They had a day with those people. Wouldn't have never got to do that had this not have been here. And the young people in my district, the football team, they use the football field still, since the Redskins are gone. So that's some positive things that did occur through having the Redskins deal, being here. I've heard a few things which were said, that slavery should be the main focus. I agree. I agree that we have taken it out of context. There is no signs in here that actually say slavery first. Everything in here talks about the stadium, whether it's for or against. Nothing says slavery first. Slavery first. So that's amazing, that that's always the thing that's being said. I remember riding down Main Street, I believe it is, and on the side of the building, there was a portrait of President Obama as a joker. I don't remember a whole lot of rickety morale about taking that down. Nobody said, you know, this is so close to our historic site. Our slaves are here. We should, our slaves was in this area. This is a disgrace. Nobody stormed down here and made a whole, nobody. He stayed up there until something happened to the business owner, and then it was taken down. But there was not this room full of people about it being so close to our heritage, and it was a disgrace about my president, my first black president. It was a disgrace to me. So I just want us to talk about things when we want to talk about things. I hear us talking about parking, transportation, all of those things. I walked the district, and I found that many of the people in my district do not have a car. They're trying to get jobs and do not have a car. It is only until it affects us personally that it becomes an issue. Nobody came down here during that time to say, let's work on rapid transportation, because people are jobless. People can't get to the jobs. If we don't have them in the city, they can't get to Chesterfield or wherever they are. Nobody's coming down here to help. Let's do something about parking. Now that it's becoming an issue in the Bottom because of a job, because we just don't want to be inconvenienced, we got a whole room full of people. Somehow, somewhere in there, we've got to be our brother's keeper. It's got to become bigger than us. It's got to become bigger than the moment that you're in. I got in this because it's bigger than me. There are people that could be living beside me that don't have a job. It's bigger than me. There are people that do not have the education. It's bigger than me. I got in this to help people be better. And so I'm working to do some things with this team of people to make Richmond be better. The other thing that I heard was, there were failures. It's all types of failures. The Sixth Street Marketplace, the this, the that, they're failures. Well, I want to talk about a few people that had some failures. Nelson Mandela went to prison. Nelson Mandela went to prison, but when he got out of prison, that's when he became the president, after prison. He could have said to himself, no, this didn't go well for me. I'm just going to be quiet and say nothing, because this did not go well for me. I'm just going to be quiet and say nothing because this did not go well for me. No. Nelson Mandela then became the icon after prison. We want to talk about 12 years a slave because I've heard that 100,000 times as well. Well, the young man in 12 years a slave, he got sold into slave trade, and then guess what after that? He still was talking about abolition and all of those things. So we don't know what happened to him because he didn't be quiet. He still fought the good fight of faith. What I'm saying is that in life, there are failures. We will never know victory if we don't have failures. Perhaps it's time for our victory. Perhaps you've got a team of people that are looking at the numbers and catching the 59 and the 79. Perhaps you've got a team of people that are working to help us be victorious because we've had enough failure. It's time for us to work together and bring victory along with honoring our heritage. There have been 15 years that they've been working on this heritage, and there have been signs and signs. How many people donated money? Your signs don't put up nothing. You got one hand out of all these people. Money is what is going to put the heritage site up. So we need to do what we need to do to get this together so that we can remember our people, our heritage, and also remember these young people that are in school that need the things that they need. These people that are down in the shelter that are sleeping on the floor. We need to help our people. And we have to begin -- say it again?
Shelter.
We have a shelter. But what we don't have is -- wait, 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 I respected you, and I need you to respect me. What we don't have is participation from the people. If the city and people would get together, then we would begin to do better. Let me explain something to you. I'm going to give you some numbers. We got 100,000 churches in this city. If every church put up $100, I'm not asking you to go broke. I'm saying $100. You could go down to that shelter and get them up off the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen--
All I'm saying is, we have got to work together to make things better. Down in the bottom is not together. It is not showing what our heritage is. If we want to talk about some good stuff, put the baseball. We got Jackie Robinson. Put him up down there. He was an African-American baseball player. Let's put him down the bottom with baseball. Let's be positive. Your schools don't have no money, honey. We have to make some. We are. And I'm not going to argue. What I am saying is, let's do what's right for our people, y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Who would like to be next? Do I have any takers for next? Dr. Newbill.
Just very briefly, and please--
She used up most of your time.
Well, I'm sure I can borrow a few minutes from another colleague. Please excuse the hoarse voice, but in 2014, this year that we sit in, strategic economic development is absolutely critical to the city's ability to generate the kind of revenue that we need to address the escalating costs and needs, many of which have been mentioned throughout the evening in terms of our schools, the actual physical plants, professional development, needs in terms of employment opportunities throughout our community to address public safety, infrastructure needs as well as housing. And while this particular proposal, we don't have all the answers to, this paper allows us to have the administration to go back, to obtain the information and clarification. Many more questions we've asked throughout this process. It's amazing to me that so few amendments have hit the table this evening. But I have to say, in fairness to the administration, a good number of questions got answered in the process, so that eliminated the number of amendments. But what this paper does is allows us to receive additional information, clarification, documentation of commitments from developers, et cetera, in order for us to make an informed decision as to whether or not, as to whether or not the economic development plan that has been proposed is the best plan for our city. And so I look forward to receiving that information so that I will have solid information to make that decision on the basis of the components of the plan address a variety of concerns and challenges in our district. It goes without saying, the heritage site and cultural site are just non-negotiable, the preservation of it. The fact that a grocery store would address one of the many food deserts, not all of them, not even all of them in my district, but would address at least one of them, that it would create employment opportunities, that our community, until we work out the regional transportation, would have easier access to, will create and generate additional tax dollars. And so I am in support of this paper because it allows us to receive the information and clarification that will allow us to make an informed decision about the plan that has been proposed. It does not approve the plan. It does allow and charges the administration to bring the information back so the council can't make an informed plan. At the end of the day, we do need strategic economic development. Is this the plan? We will know if this is the right plan based on the information, and we will decision about that based on the information that the administration brings back to us. And so I look forward to receiving that and, again, reviewing the information such that we do determine if this is the right economic development plan because we must have strategic economic development to address the challenges confronting our city. I mean, we need not be confused about that. We absolutely must have it. Our children must have it. Our employees must have it. So making a informed and well reasoned and data-driven decision is what's before us, and this paper allows us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Ms. Trammell.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens that came here tonight and forced your opinion. And it's -- I know that when one of the speakers asked some of the ones that were for it to stand up, and I know that there was a little bit of, I guess, some riff back there because it looks like to me it was like even when you had the speaker stand in line to speak for it or against it. But I know that we're asking administration to give us more, or I guess we're giving them more time since we've been talking about this for over a year. And I know that I've held several meetings in my district where people, and a lot of you sit in an audience, you all have been to those meetings, and heard the citizens say, no, they did not want it. And I was elected to represent the people of my district, not just a few, but I've heard -- I've got over 700 of those baseball cards. And I had to hurry up and get here today because we've been going to meetings back and forth. Cynthia and Chris and I was here for the interviews today with the Richmond Land and Land Authority, left a big bag of those cards to show you all them, not just making it up. And like I said, some of you that are here right tonight have been to those meetings and heard the people speak against they did not want it because they said that they brought up different things about Sixth Street Market and some of the other things. But as I've said, we don't want to go back that way. We don't want to talk about that. But I'm just saying that if we're going to give the administration more time to go back and then come back to us, why don't we -- someone else has already called me trying to give me some -- but anyway, because not everybody could come down here tonight. Not everybody, you know, and then I know that a couple elderly people, they did come down here. They say couldn't even find a place to park, and they couldn't walk no four or five blocks to come in here. But if we're going to do this, why not let the citizens have their voice be heard? Let's do a referendum.
Folks, you know the rules.
That's the only way to be fair, and that's the way that I would have to be fair, not only to the citizens of my district, but in the city, the whole city. And let, I mean, let's do that. Why not? Why not? Thank you.
All right, guys. Thank you for the applause, but you guys know the rules. Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Mr. Helbert, do you have anything you would like to say?
I do, Mr. President. When we started this process, a few council members asked for two proposals, and we didn't get that. We got a proposal that was, I appreciate, interlinked with one, with various chains in that link, that if one of those fell out, then suddenly the whole thing fell apart. That's a difficult proposition. I understand that the stadium is a vehicle by which you can mitigate flooding in Chaco Bottom. That doesn't make it, in my opinion, any less concerning to have a venue of entertainment next to a site where a tremendous amount of suffering happened and something that I believe that we as a community need to turn around and look at. But there's been three words here that have been said once this evening. Someone correct me if I'm wrong, but those three words are Virginia Union University. There was triumph there at the end, that no matter what happened at that site, that someone stepped forward and said, we're going to make something out of this place of horrors, this devil's half acre, that we're going to educate African-Americans that were -- refuse that in the future, excuse me, refuse that in the past, that to be able to read and write was a crime. That is incredible. And I don't have children, but I can't imagine the horrors of having a child separated from you for the rest of your life, not knowing what happened to them, but you had the certainty that they were going to lead a life in bondage, more than likely. We need, as a community, to turn around and look at that. And I am concerned about having a baseball park next to that. So I want to have, excuse me, this archeological study, even though that amendment was rejected, it seems to me that we can't go down this path and then say, whoops, there was actually something here. I mean, then what's going to happen? We owe it to you all to have the facts in front of us before we make a decision. And we don't have that today. There's some controversy about where this stands, but possibly, they could work together, but I'm concerned about having this venue, as I said, of entertainment next to something where all this suffering happened. But we did have some triumph there, and I haven't heard from the administration and from the individuals and corporations with wealth how we are going to highlight the story of Virginia Union and their triumph at this site and how that institution went on to create generations of educated African-Americans, that one of whom became the governor of Virginia. Now, if you were standing at that site in 1865, when the war ended, odds were you wouldn't think that that would ever happen, but it has. And what we need to do, we not only need to look at that past and make sure that the story is told, but there's a future that we need to talk about. And we need to institute a community development agreement or something like that where I'm not seeing -- I was told that this was, and I've been told over and over, this is an economic development proposal that happens to include baseball. Okay? I hear that. I do not see the link between jobs and this proposal. Yes, there's going to be a few created, but if we're going to talk about something bold, this is, while inventive and certainly something different and something that does address two sites of the Boulevard and Chaco Bottom, it still, in my opinion, falls a little short on the economic development and the job creation. So in getting back to the Boulevard, again, I know that this amendment was defeated. And the Boulevard site is very close to my district. It's not in it, but it's close. And individuals in my district, when we have time to go and to shop for goods, I drive to South Side just so I can shop in the city if I'm going to patron a big-box retailer because that's my option. And I appreciate that most people aren't that determined to shop in the city because they have five other places that are closer to them. And this is a critical, critical need. And what I'm hearing is, the way this was rolled out was, this is the proposal, it's all interlinked, you pull a link out, it's going to fall apart, and the Boulevard is a blank slate. And that's a real problem for me. If this was going to be pulled together, I think we need some answers as to what's going to be at the Boulevard. We desperately, desperately need retail opportunities in the North Side. You can go to a Kroger at Broad and Lombardi and still be in the city. That's a little bit of a drive for folks in my district. And I believe that it's a good place, but it would be nice to have another opportunity and a diversity of choices. And I don't believe, as this sits, that we have that right now. But I'm asking, any proposal that can get my support going forward is going, and I appreciate these were defeated, these amendments. But if we can't prove, or at least to the satisfaction of an objective observer, that the traffic is going to work, and we did vote that amendment down, and we can't assure people that these archeological sites will be identified with some, not with absolute certainty, but with some learned opinion, and if we don't have something in here about more explicitly creating jobs and hooking or giving opportunities for our citizens in the city to benefit from this, then this is going to be a real problem for me to support it. We have a lot of needs, and we are the minority of people that go to these games. And I'm very concerned that we're bearing the risk for that. We want to draw people in, and that's great, but when I've asked people who reside in the county, oh, yeah, I think that's a great idea about a baseball stadium down there. That'd be a lot of fun. And when I ask them, do they want their tax dollars at risk on it? I start to get a hemming and hawing on it. So I believe that Mr. Blile's amendment of removing the moral obligation of the city from the debt that's being issued and asking for security to make sure that these buildings are built and, I think, substantially reduces the financial risk to the city. Doesn't eliminate it, but it substantially reduces it. So I want to make sure, I'm going to ask that folks in the city are pretty pumped about this, but I'm asking this evening that if you live in the county and you're listening to this, to call your representatives, that your members of the Board of Supervisors, and tell them that it's, that you would like to see your jurisdiction involved in this. We don't need the other jurisdictions to be involved in this, but I think it would be helpful from a financial risk standpoint. City of Richmond can stand on two feet. We run a transportation system that the others have opted out of, so we're doing okay. We don't do everything right. We have a lot of things that trouble me greatly and keep me awake at night. But we're trying to do what we can and taking on a difficult endeavor here. And I would ask that the residents of the county that are supportive of the squirrels and really want to come downtown to be a part of this discussion versus letting the city do it all with the fewest amount of people and the tightest resources with all the state property that's non-taxable in our area. the state property that's non-taxable in our area. So I believe that these areas that I've indicated are going to be, need to be addressed in order for me to ultimately support this plan. And that is the traffic and the archaeological studies and linking the jobs to individuals that will be helped in the city and a recognition of Virginia Union University and their role in our city. And of course, this heritage side that's being addressed by Dr. Newbill's amendment, to raise this money in the beginning, not this is going to be in the buy-and-buy and maybe we'll raise this money and maybe the site will go up after.
Mr. Bliles, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
It's eleven minutes now.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliles.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say I'm amazed at the turnout of this meeting tonight, both in person and online. They've apparently had to create an overflow room in the second-floor conference room so people could watch, and the RBA Council hashtag has been informative and hilarious. I encourage everybody to check it out. But I think the increased civic engagement is another sign of how Richmond has changed and is getting better each and every day. From the beginning to this whole process, I've remained unbiased and open-minded, and that hasn't changed. As much as sometimes I get dismayed by this process and how everything is rolled out, and how sometimes people on both sides may have mischaracterized the other, I think it has been a good night, and I have not engaged in any of this kind of mischaracterization, and I won't. I realize this is an important and passionate issue, and the great thing is, there were a lot of new faces that we hadn't heard at other community meetings or in this chamber tonight that came out and spoke for the first time. Addressing the slave heritage site, I think it's one that needs to happen, and it can happen, in my opinion, with or without a ballpark. But I agree with Delegate McQuinn in that the time is now to start working on it. The thing that troubles me a little bit is, that part of the plan is, at least from our knowledge, the least developed so far. So it's something that we need to get working on and do it in a hurry. And that whole history is so important. I came to work here in the city in 2008, and until then, other than Henry Box Brown, I never knew what happened down there. And it's not, to me, it's not only tragic, it's embarrassing. It's a story that should be told and must be told, in my opinion. Beyond the slave heritage site, Richmond's been moving forward and will continue to do so regardless of this project. We've achieved more top-ten lists in the last couple of years than David Letterman does in a season. And Chaco is not, sometimes it's characterized as a wasteland, which I don't think is true. It's the fastest-growing census tract in the city and has been for the last ten years. I talked with the city assessor, and Chaco Bottom's total assessed value in 1998 was $218 million. Today, it's $886 million. It's a 400% increase. Since we know that the Boulevard numbers, as provided in the Davenport report, are speculative and not market-tested, it's absolutely essential that the Chaco part of this resolution or this overall project is absolutely locked down. It cannot come up short. And I offered my amendment tonight to better protect the city if the negotiations continue. I think the amendment puts us in a better starting position, so if a deal does go forward and is negotiated and brought back to this chamber, the city is going to be better protected. Removing the moral obligation is something that is very critical, because the last time the city morally obligated bonds with the Community Development Authority, within six or seven years, the city had to pass a resolution bailing it out, and it cost $67 million. Without the amendment tonight, I think the city would have been negotiating from a point of weakness. And anybody that's lived here all their life, like I have, or even just a long time, knows that the city's got a history of bad deals behind us, and a lot of, some of the time, we've gotten very badly burned. No business that wants to stay in business and no business leader who wants to remain leading the way would walk in, openly walk into negotiations with their arms tied behind their back. And I appreciate the council adopting the amendment tonight. Earlier tonight, one of the papers that we passed on the consent agenda allows Mr. Marshall to execute an already-negotiated agreement with a telecommunications company. This resolution that we're discussing does not allow the CAO to go ahead and execute an agreement about a ballpark. I've been unswayed in either direction throughout this entire time and keep my options open, and I'll do that, because approval tonight does not mean the stadium is going to get built. The city attorney and I have talked several times over the last couple of days, and he's assured me that nothing can move forward without coming back to this chamber. So there are no backdoors. And we've been told, while we've been told that every project has risks, sometimes we've been told that this project is so good, there's no risk to the city, and that it's a strange dichotomy that kind of makes me a little nervous. But if the negotiations go forward and the development talks fall apart, then the changes we made protected the city. The talks go forward and an agreement is reached, then it comes back into this room, and we have another marathon session like we have tonight, hopefully a little shorter. If another plan comes along, we can consider that as well. But until that happens, this is not a done deal. It doesn't mean that I will support this project if it comes back to this chamber. It just means I'll have more information than I do today. We all will, the public and this council. But what I will do, as I mentioned, is remain fair and open-minded and try to put the city's best interest ahead of the administration's, developers, or even my career on this council. I'd never wanted to live anywhere else, and I would never want to live here for the rest of my life, knowing that a decision that I made without all the information was a disastrous one for the city. And I will remain vigilant and look out for Richmond first, and therefore, I'm going to support this resolution tonight, but I will be unequivocally clear that tonight's decision does not equate to my ultimate support of the overall proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Bliles. Vice President Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank everyone who has, who came down tonight, who has sent us emails and other means of communication, that has been straightforward with sharing their viewpoints as it relates to the paper, the development opportunity that is before us. I am grateful. I want to acknowledge that I appreciate Mr. Marshall being here with us the entire evening and that he has had the opportunity to hear firsthand all of the comments that have been made, both in favor and those against, the challenge that is currently before us as it relates to making sure we make the right decision for the city of Richmond and for the taxpayers of this great city. Like many development deals that come before us, they are complicated, they are challenging, and they require a lot of this council to make sure that we are making the right decision. I support many of the statements and recommendations that have been made by many of you, both those in support and in opposition for this development. I would be less than honest if I didn't say that the baseball feels like a kind of big shoe and a tight fit. But I'm grateful for the opportunity that what this paper provides for us, and that is an opportunity for us to get a true factual development plan with all of the terms and the conditions of the agreements, and that we will be able to look at that agreement and make a decision based on the merits of the agreement. I want to reemphasize, as my colleagues have already said, that my decision is not based upon giving the administration the opportunity to prevent us with an actual proposal, but it will be made based on receiving and the review and the analysis of that proposal. I also would like to say that I think the process that we continue to use in the city of Richmond for entertaining development and development deals is not what it need to be. It should not be at a level that we would have to, where the citizens would feel that there is a lack of trust and there's a lack of transparency. And so I have asked the administration previously, and I've also talked with business leaders in the city and citizens in the city, and many have agreed to work with us to critically analyze the process that we go through and to ensure the citizens feel like they participated in the design and the development of proposed developments, that their tax dollars are going to be spent on by the city of Richmond. And I think there's a lot of improvement that can be done, and I would, I have asked and will see to it that we address that and that the citizens will be involved in making that decision. I also support and feel very strongly that the sentiments that have been expressed in this room and previously in regards to this proposal as relates to the security of real jobs, the fact of circulation, transportation, parking, the archaeology information that we need to make sure that we are doing the right thing, needs to be addressed with specific detail in the proposal that we will get back from the administration by March 27. I also think it's important that we are provided with the baseline information that we need as it relates to the current revenues and current taxes in both at the Boulevard as well as at the Bottom, so that we can really, truly evaluate economic impact of whatever decisions that we make as it relates to the development that would take place in the city of Richmond. I have asked my colleagues also, and I'll ask them again, that we seriously consider hiring an independent consultant that will work with this council to review the proposal that comes to us on March 27, to ensure that we are just not making a decision based on our own judgments, but is made with the support of a professional consultant that will review this proposal, that will look at every number that is in this proposal, every recommendation of the development strategy that's going to be used, and so that we will also have that information available to the citizens, so that you will understand and see that we are doing the best job we can to bring about integrity, transparency, and trust, and also seek professional guidance in evaluating whatever the proposal is that comes back to us. I have asked for this before, I'm asking for it again, and I hope that we will proceed with doing that. We do not have the expertise in our, on our staff on this side to make those type of So I'm grateful that we have this opportunity to get a detailed report, that we will have all of the items spelled out in detail, and that hopefully as a means of evaluating the new revenue that will be generated from whatever development proposals that we consider. That the things that my citizens in the Sixth District are more concerned about, such as poverty, not having adequate drainage in South Side, potholes that they feel like they're driving an amaze, that we would be smart enough to, and also have the political will, to designate funding for critical issues in community development in the city of Richmond, expanding our workforce center, addressing our needs of poverty, and not just passing a paper that says we will put up to, but passing a paper that says we will fund affordable housing in the city of Richmond. I encourage the citizens to continue to be as strong-willed as you have been and to continue to communicate with us on a regular basis, that we may do the best job that we can with your tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Robertson. Ms. Trammell.
Mr. President, thank you. I was not going to say this earlier, but John Bliles, you said something about, you know, this many people down here. I can remember being, sitting in this seat back in 2000, 2001, when we had another very, very hot topic, and that was voting for mayor-at-large. You all remember that? Voting for mayor-at-large. And what did we do? That's right. And what do you got to do? You got to get at least 9,000 registered voters. Let's do it. Paul Goldman did it. Paul Goldman did it. You all can do it. And then that takes us all off the hot seat, because right now, we're on the hot seat, you know? And the ones that are fourth, the ones that are against it, wouldn't that be, I mean, then that...
It's real trust if you says it. It really is.
I mean, this is something that we need to do. You all got the power? Use it. Let's do it. Let's do it.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Counselors.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, no, I'm not doing this. I'm not going around a second time, Mr. Aguilasta. What do you want to say? You got one minute.
But that's perfectly fine. When we started this, I didn't realize that we were doing our entire statement, so I gave a very, very brief statement as the very first person on the onset. So I would, in fact, appreciate just a little bit of more than a minute here.
All right, wait, before you say anything else, who else wants to speak a second time? All right, Mr. Aguilasta.
Thank you. You know, I think this is one of those situations where you can spend so much time looking at the proposals and asking the questions, and you're trying to fact-check every single thing. And I think what has been done tonight is trying to fact-check. However, I do feel that council, as the governing body in this instance, needs to really understand its role and what this ultimately does. There are two things that this is going to do. A, it's going to take a substantial amount of investment that goes against our debt capacity, and currently, we need to all understand that our current borrowing capacity for additional dollars is about $60 to $65 million. Okay? What are the priority lists? Is baseball number one? I hear bus rapid transit. I hear city stadium developments. I hear rewatering the canal. I hear new schools. I hear all sorts of long lists. There's $60 million. This is going to take 23 that doesn't have any revenue attached to it. So council needs to decide now if this is the priorities. Otherwise, we may be at a position where they come and say, "We want a new Coliseum." We don't have the money to do a new Coliseum now. We're sorry. We just spent it. So what are the priorities? What are the best returns on investment? And I think that this council needs to begin to understand what our obligations are. We've been talking about the debt ceiling for a long time. We know what the revenue forecasts are, and I think we need the administration to present to us what are our options for investing in the future. Secondly, I do want to make very clear that everywhere we go, people say, "Yes, we want to see more revenues coming to the city. Yes, we want to see redevelopment of the Boulevard and Chaco Bottom. Yes, we're behind the..." Yes, we're behind the Slavery Museum Heritage Site 100%. I don't find that many people anywhere in the universe who have opposed those concepts. However, it's a matter of where we go to next. What are the details of where we go to next? One thing that should be ultimately clear, the Davenport Study. City Council refers to the Davenport Study. The public has referred to the Davenport Study. The Davenport Study makes it very clear, from the conversations with developers, that yes, even if you develop the ballpark on the Boulevard, you're going to get 300 apartment units. You're going to get a 65,000-square-foot grocery store. You're going to get 700 car parking deck. That's in the Davenport Study. That is provided by the same people who are saying this is where all the revenue is going to come from if you put baseball in the Bottom. So this notion of you're not going to have a base, a grocery store without baseball is a false premise. And I think it's very important that we continue to look at the Davenport Study. I know my colleagues have asked, why is the development on the Boulevard with baseball going to be a 30-acre development? Why can't it be on a 10-acre footprint? And when you do the math based on the city's own recommendations on a price per acre return of what the new revenue is coming from the Boulevard would be, if you shrink it to 10 acres, you're only talking about maybe a million-dollar difference between the revenue forecasts for baseball in the Bottom with all of this development versus baseball on the Boulevard with very limited redevelopment in the Bottom because the city hasn't committed to, to doing the floodplain. That's a pretty close analogy. There's more revenue that we can tap in the Bottom if the city makes the investment to mitigate the floodplain. And I think we can mitigate the floodplain for less than $23 million. It's very clear to me that we can do that. So in many ways, the city's own data could support a redevelopment on the Boulevard while, at the same time, having development in Chaco Bottom, getting a Slavery Museum, and doing it for less money from the public side of the equation. At this point, the way I see it is that it's a decision of preference. Do you prefer baseball to go to Chaco Bottom, or do you prefer baseball to stay on the Boulevard? That's the way the math works, when you start to say, give me a smaller footprint for baseball on, on the Boulevard. So I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. All right, folks. You're wearing me down. All right. I'm the last man up. I think we can all count votes. We know this resolution is going to pass. Perfect should not be the enemy of good, but better should cook goods rear-end every single time. And I want to thank my colleagues whose amendments did pass tonight for making this resolution stronger and making this resolution better than it was as it came in today. You know, we may have been talking about baseball on the Bottom for four months. We've had this resolution for two weeks. And the hours of work that we have put into this is undoubtedly told by the bags under our eyes and the pain in our fingertips from typing. Thank you for letting us know how you feel about this proposal. I'll keep it in mind as we go through our decision. Hundreds of emails, dozens of letters, phone calls, like I said before, every type of communication you can imagine, we've received. And there's a lot of good reasons for supporting this proposal, and there's a lot of good reasons for opposing it. And I thank everyone for being involved. At the end of the day, we all can agree on one thing. We can do better than what's in the Bottom right now, and we can do better than what's on the Boulevard right now. We need to redevelop these two sites. We just disagree about the best way of going about it. Voting no does not mean that I'm against development. It doesn't mean I'm against business. It just means that I believe we've got to make sure that we have protected our citizens, our history, and that we have the best information, most accurate information, most current information available before we make a right decision, whichever way we move forward on this. You know, this has been one of those issues that's not only polarized our community, but has brought community members together. Who here met somebody based on their involvement in either support or opposition to the ballpark? We know our community better now than we did at the beginning of this process. Regardless of what we think tonight, we'll have a better idea of where that process is headed over the next four months. Let's be clear. The administration is going to go out and negotiate within the parameters of this resolution with the developers until March 27th. We will then receive a proposal on March 27th or shortly thereafter about what they propose the actual plan will be. And then City Council will start the process of actually reviewing the real plan. And here's the catch. One of the parameters we agreed to tonight was that the permits have to be issued by August 1st, which means council realistically can't vote on this in July. We're looking at a June vote. Realistically, we're looking at April and May to discuss it, maybe June. So we haven't just worked hard the last four months, especially the last two weeks. We have a few months ahead of us where we're going to really have to work hard to make sure we hear from you guys more and to make sure that we understand exactly what is being proposed so that we don't have anything occur with unintended consequences. We heard from one gentleman earlier tonight, Mr. Gilbert, about his concerns of getting accurate information on time and looking over his list of things. And he's absolutely right. Not a single one of these questions that he asked I could answer in a way that would suggest things come to us on time or, in all fairness, accurately all the time. And that's a concern with me. That's why I put in the amendment I did. And that's why I have concerns about making sure this proposal is as tight as possible before we send it out for negotiation. You guys heard last week, the city of Richmond forgot to send an invoice for $100,000. Source schools could get $100,000 worth of cash. We received our comprehensive annual financial report today. The KFER? Caffer? I say KFER, you say Caffer. It's this thick. There were some adjustments made since last year's Caffer. It required a restatement of some of our debt and some of our assets. Here's the quote. "The net effect of all these adjustments between the cost and the accumulated depreciation $92 million just disappeared. That's almost half of the high end of what we expect this development to bring in over the next 20 years. Maybe that's a reason to vote for it because we desperately need the money. Maybe it's a reason to really make sure that the city is insulated from any liability, that the taxpayers held harmless if anything goes wrong. Because of what I've heard from my constituents and other citizens throughout the city, I propose the four amendments of finance, archaeology, traffic study, and the Boulevard Plan. Guys, remember in 2009, West Broad Village went bankrupt? Do you guys remember that Kansas City is on the hook for a bond issuance to create an entertainment district? We asked for some basic requirements, and thankfully, John Bilal's amendment passed because we need to continue to insulate the taxpayers from unwarranted risk. We know there's three slave trading sites actually underneath the proposed baseball stadium. This gets lost in the presentations that we've seen over the last several years because we do focus, and rightly so, on Lumpkin's Jail and the burial ground. But that wasn't where it all occurred. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to find a way to do more than just what Section 106 requires, to ensure that we truly preserve and protect what is underground in Chaco Bottom right now. I got a letter from Preservation Virginia today asking me to oppose this because of the concerns of the heritage site. You heard from Dr. Kim Allen, former chair of the NAACP here in town. I got a letter from our sister city in Mali requesting, expressing their sincere concern about what we are doing, not just to our heritage, but to theirs. We'll know more. The traffic study's still coming. That's not the end of the world. And while I'm concerned that we still don't know what's going to happen on the Boulevard before permits are issued and before the digging begins in Chaco Bottom, rest assured, we will have citizen input well before a plan is developed for the Boulevard site. My goal is to ensure Richmond continues to grow. 7,000 people from 2000 to 2010 moved into the city. 7,000 more people moved in from 2010 to 2013. That's exponential growth. We're in the Crescent, and I can't remember the exact name, the Population Crescent on the East Coast. The greater Richmond region has to build over 5,300 new residential units a year to keep up with demand in our region. We're growing. Development's going to happen, and we're going to have more people in a few years than we ever thought possible in a city that has seen a hemorrhaging of residents for decades. But I hope you agree that as we move forward, we can't let a need for something fast trump doing it the right way. Without the amendments I put in, I, I can't support the plan. Once we see what happens with the proposals, maybe even though my amendments weren't accepted, the negotiations will continue. You can negotiate outside the parameters as long as you're told not to, as long as you're not told not to. So maybe some of those things will still come in. And I look forward to seeing the proposals on March 27th. But we're leaving an awful lot to chance right now, and I have grave concerns. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counsel is voting on item number 25, resolution number 2014-R29, as amended. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agilasto?
No.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
No.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
No.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, folks. As you exit, if you decide to leave now instead of waiting until the end of the meeting, I ask that you do so quietly as we do continue to have a council meeting to go through.
Too many bodies to be quiet.
Would you guys like a two-minute recess while everybody clears out? All right, folks, we're going to take a two-minute recess while everybody clears out. I ask that you be back in exactly two minutes. I got 11:09 now.
Y'all need to make me a person.
If you're in the city, you can talk. If you're outside, the city, the thing is, you can't.
A really great job. Keeping this straight.
Ladies and gentlemen, our short recess is up. I said two minutes. It's been five, or it's been four. So we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order, bring us out of recess, ask council members to please take their seats. Madam Clerk, if memory serves, we are on papers to amend and continue at this point.
That is correct, and we do have one, which is item number three, ordinance number 2014-10. To provide for the granting by the city to the person, firm, or corporation to be ascertained in the manner prescribed by law of the lease franchise right and privilege to use the main and maintain certain properties located at 12 North Boulevard for the management, maintenance, and operation of Monroe Park in accordance with certain agreement in deed of lease. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page one, line eight after the word lease, insert a comma followed by the words as amended. Page one, line 15 after the word lease, insert a comma followed by the words as amended, followed by a comma. Page two, line two after the word on, delete the month February and insert the month March. Page two, line 18 after comma following the word lease... Page two, line 18 after comma following the word lease, insert the words "as amended," followed by a comma. Page two, line 23 after the word lease, insert a comma followed by the words "as amended," followed by a comma. Page three, line three after the word lease, insert a comma followed by the words "as amended," followed by a comma. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as read and to continue that paper to Monday, March... So moved, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Counsel is voting on Council Newbill's motion to accept the amendment to that paper as read and to continue it to March the 24th. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell? Ms. Newbill? Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That amendment has been adopted, and that paper will be before you again on March the 24th.
Thank you very much. Now, may we please have an approval of some minutes?
Yes, sir. The minutes to be approved are from the informal meeting of February the 10th and the formal meeting of February the 10th. I'll need a motion to approve those minutes. Councilmember Graziano, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Counsel is voting on Councilmember Graziano's motion to approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those minutes have been adopted.
Thank you very much. Reports and announcements, it won't hurt my feelings if they're short. Dr. Newbill.
One of the few times, I probably won't be short, but I'll aim for it. Okay, so the first item I would like to share tomorrow, the Richmond Metropolitan Habitat for Humanity, groundbreaking celebration will occur in Richmond's East End at 1516 North 35th Street. And the time will be from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., and we would invite all to come out and join the Richmond Metropolitan Habitat for Humanity in this celebration. Special guests will include performers from Ringling Brothers and Barnum &amp; Bailey. And so fun and festive time for all to be had. So again, please come out and support Habitat for Humanity. We have a new superintendent in town, and we are inviting you, this is Peter Paul Development Center, for a program and reception to welcome the new superintendent, Dr. Dana Betton, on Thursday, March 6th at 5:15 p.m. at the Peter Paul Development Center at 1708 North 22nd Street. Again, come out and welcome and get to know our new superintendent. North Churchill Better Block Community Walk and Talk will happen on March 12th at 6:00 p.m. There'll be a community walk meet, and we will meet at the corner of 25th and Venable Street. And this is an event that is a joint initiative by Sportsback Response Corps and the City of Richmond, inviting the community to come out and be a part of a conversation to talk about an event that will allow us to attract even more businesses to the commercial quarter to further revitalize that quarter. So pop-up businesses will be a part of the effort, but it will all contribute to the ultimate transformation of the commercial quarter. So again, come out, March 12th, 6:00 p.m. for the community walk and talk. We're gonna meet at the corner of 25th and Venable and talk about what it might be like to have businesses all along that section of the corridor and get your input, and then look forward to the event later in the summer. The last one, Mr. President, the next Seventh District Community Meeting is scheduled for March 17th at 6:30 p.m. at the East District Family Resource Center located at 2405 Jefferson Avenue. And we invite all to come out. We have many, many items for discussion, including an update from this evening's meeting in terms of the RVA Economic Development Plan. Hopefully, again, another opportunity to meet our superintendent and to hear from our Public Safety Officers to talk about other types of events and activities. So again, March 17th, 6:30 p.m., East District Family Resource Center, 2405 Jefferson Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Three minutes, nine seconds. Ms. Trammell, can you beat it?
Mr. President, I just wanted everyone to know that we have changed our Public Safety Meeting to the Fourth Tuesday, and it will be held here at the Council Chambers. I think it's March the, okay, March the 25th at 5:00 p.m., Council Chambers. And the reason why we're having it here, because we can, we have free parking for our meetings, so please attend our Public Safety Meeting. A lot of citizens and business owners have been calling me in the past couple of days in reference to Mr. Lee, owner of the Satellite Restaurant and Club. Mr. Lee did pass away, and our hearts go out to his wife and to his family. They had the service for him Thursday, on February the 20th at 8:00 p.m. So it's been a very, very sad time. He is truly going to be missed because he's been like a father, the Jefferson Davis Corridor. Again, that's Mr. Lee, owner of the Satellite Restaurant and Lounge. Also, we're not gonna start our meetings back until the Third Thursday in April, which is April the 17th at 6:00 p.m. at the Satellite, 4,000 Block of Jefferson Davis. That's when we start back our Eighth District Meeting, and everyone is welcome to attend. This right here is your smoke alarm. It's free, but the only thing in the city right now that is free, if you call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, the firefighters will come to your home, to your business, to your apartment, to your church, and they will put it up for free. Not the police officers, not the animal control officers, but these Richmond firefighters. And I think they're the only ones that's doing this, is our Richmond firefighters. And if you don't want to call, you can go to your nearest fire station and ask them to come to your house to do a check, because we all know that these smoke alarms, they save your life, they save your pets, and they save your home. So make sure you have a free, free smoke alarm. Barack Obama wants every home to have a working smoke alarm. Thank you, our President Barack Obama.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Two minutes even. Mr. Hilbert?
I believe I can do less than that. The next North Side District Three meeting is Wednesday, February the 26th, this coming Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. at Pine Camp, 4901 Old Brook Road. The agenda will include safety tips by our police team that will be there, the sector lieutenants, as well as an update from our neighbors at the Partnership for Families North Side. The Finance Department will be on hand for individuals with questions about tax relief, and there'll be a presentation by Public Works on upcoming projects, including road maintenance, paving, alley maintenance, and sidewalk projects. Please plan to attend with your questions, and we look forward to seeing you Wednesday, 6:00 at Pine Camp. Thank you, Mr. President.
Fifty-five seconds. Mr. Agelasto?
I apologize to my colleagues. I had too many announcements, unfortunately. It's that time when my civic leagues all meet. And we also have very important community forums with storefront for community design regarding City Stadium, and these are important announcements. So I ask my constituents to please listen up for these dates, times, and meeting locations. On Tuesday, February 25th, that is tomorrow, the Woodland Heights Civic Association is meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the Woodland Heights Baptist Church located at 611 West 31st Street. Also tomorrow evening is the Oregon Hill Civic Association at 7:00 p.m. located at the William Byrd Community House, 224 South Cherry Street. This Thursday night is gonna be the first community engagement meeting that storefront for community design is hosting regarding City Stadium. This is for residents of the stadium neighborhood, of the Carytown neighborhood, of areas from the Carolan and adjoining properties, also Rothstein Circle, folks that will be impacted by any development at City Stadium. That meeting Thursday evening is at 5:45 p.m. at the Byrd Park Roundhouse. Again, this is the community engagement regarding City Stadium, Thursday, February 27th at 5:45 p.m. at the Byrd Park Roundhouse. If you can't make Thursday evening, we've also scheduled for a meeting this coming Saturday, March the 1st. This meeting will be located at John B. Cary Elementary School and will begin at 10:00 a.m. So if you can't make Thursday night at the Roundhouse, please come on Saturday, March the 1st, 10:00 a.m. at John B. Cary Elementary School, again, for a conversation regarding City Stadium. Monday, March the 3rd, the Hall Street Midlothian Civic Association will be meeting at 7:00 p.m. at Quantanear Christian Church located at 3,600 McRand Street. And I just want to thank all of the many residents of the neighborhood that came out to the last meeting. It was tremendous to see that level of engagement. I hope that it continues. I want to also thank Pastor Keith Edmonds for his leadership of this civic group. The Richmond Police Department recently acknowledged his work on their behalf, and I too commend him. And please, if you live in the area between Hall Street and Midlothian Turnpike, near Swansboro, Swansboro West, please come out on Monday, March the 3rd, 7:00 p.m., Quantanear Christian Church, 3,600 McRand Street. The Randolph Community Group will be meeting on March the 4th, that is a Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m. at the Randolph Community Center located at 1415 Grayland Avenue. That same evening, the Uptown Civic Association meets at 6:00 p.m. at F.W. Sullivan's at 2401 West Main Street. Again, there's lots of activity going on in our neighborhoods, and I encourage all residents to come to one of your local civic meetings and get more engaged. Thank you very much, Council President.
That still is pretty good, Mr. Agelasto. Ms. Mosby?
I just would like to first thank the residents who showed up to our first February 20th, 2014 district meeting at First Union Baptist Church. Our next meeting will be held at the Goodwill, and it is changed to March 20th, and that's 6301 Midlothian Turnpike. The residents of Ninth District, we wanted you to be aware that on February 25th through the 28th, the eastbound lane of Hall Street Road, Elkhart Road to Hayrow will be closed to allow for a guardrail replacement and relocation of underground communication lines. So need to rearrange your traveling so that you can get where you're going on time. Last but not least, in light of African-American History Month, I would like to offer a quote from Martin Luther King, "While We Can't Wait." The conservatives who say, "Let us not move so fast," and the extremists who say, "Let us go out and whip the world," will tell you that they are as far apart as the poles. But there is a striking parallel. They accomplish nothing, for they do not reach the people who have a crying need to be free. As always, I'm concerned about your needs, and I can be reached at Michelle dot Mosby at RichmondGov.com and 804-646-2779. Thank you.
Very nice, Ms. Mosby. Thank you. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you.
Do you have something you should like to share with the rest of the class?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind people that now is the time to apply for tax relief for the seniors and disabled. And if you have income of less than $50,000 a year and assets of less than $200,000, not counting your house, you will be eligible. So please make sure that if you can use this assistance, that you apply, or if you know somebody who can use it, help them to apply. I want to thank the Civic Association Presidents who came to my house last Thursday night for the President's Meeting. We do this every other month. Thursday night, we had Bobby Vincent from Public Works there, and I would like to thank Bobby Vincent for coming. He gave us a lot of very good information, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bilalz?
Nothing to announce, just wanted to thank everybody that came out to the, our Town Hall meeting last week on baseball and the revitalized RVA plan. Obviously, the debate will continue, and appreciate everybody's input moving forward. I'd also just like to say a special thanks to the police officers who have been standing up since 3:00 in this chamber. And that's all I've got, so they can go home.
Amen to that. Thank you, officers. Ms. Robertson?
Thank you. Okay. We, meeting was, Town Meeting was council in February. That meeting's been rescheduled to March 8th. It will be at the Bellmead Community Center from 10:00 to 12:00. New Superintendent, he'll be getting around town, will be there, as well as our School Board Representative, Shandra Harris Mohammed, and Derek Jones will be there to talk about their relationship, building stronger partnerships with the community, as well as we've invited Delegate Bessie Carr to give us an update on the legislative agenda. And there also will be a representative from the city to assist those that may need assistance with the applications for seniors for tax relief. Also, on March the 6th, we will be having a meeting at Ann Hardy Park at 5:00, where we will be receiving information from a group of students that have put together a business economic development, marketing strategy, or the redevelopment of the Meadow Bridge Quarter, as well as there will be work sessions to put together a strategy along with the Garden Angels as it relates to black-on-black crime in the neighborhood, and a further plan for the implementation of the master plan for Ann Hardy Park. The Manchester Alliance Civic Association will be meeting on March the 13th at Legends, and they will be receiving a report from the City's Department of Transportation in regards to the study that was just completed regarding parking on Hall Street and other transportation issues in the Manchester community area.
Oh.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Robertson. Madam Clerk, start the clock, please. Tuesday, February 25th at 7:00 p.m. at 1103 Marshall Street, the Carver Area Civic Improvement League will be meeting. I'll be at the March Meeting, which is scheduled for March 25th. Last Sunday night, I went to the Monument Avenue Preservation Society's annual meeting, and will be attending their March 3rd meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the Virginia Center for Architecture, 2501 Monument Avenue. I'll be doing a Q&amp;A with the membership there. I wonder if baseball will be a discussion item. Rosedale's quarterly meeting will be on Tuesday, March 4th at 7:00 p.m. at the Hermitage, 1600 Westwood Avenue. The Hermitage recently underdid, underwent a big renovation. I look forward to seeing it. And lastly, the Museum District Association's Town Hall Meeting will be held Thursday, March 6th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at St. Benedict's School. I look forward to seeing my residents that I basically share with Mr. Bilalz there. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming tonight. Officers, thank you very much for coming. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record any papers for introduction?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 2014-23, to amend city code for the purpose of adding the classifications of Senior Assistant to the Mayor, Press Secretary, Senior Policy Advisor to the Mayor, and Senior Policy Advisor to Senior Executive Group. Governmental Operations, February 27, 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March 10. Ordinance 2014-24, to amend the pay plan to exclude the classifications of Senior Assistant to the Mayor, Press Secretary, and Senior Policy Advisor from the unclassified service to the unclassified executive service and to the new classification of Senior Policy Advisor to the Mayor and the unclassified executive service. Governmental Operations, February 27, 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March 10. Ordinance 2014-25, to authorize the CAO to accept $160,000 from VDOT and to appropriate the amount to the new Safe Routes to Schools project for the purpose of providing improvements in the vicinity of Mary Munford Elementary and William Fox Elementary Schools. Planning Commission, March 3rd, 1:30 p.m. Land Use Housing and Transportation, March 18th, 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Ordinance 2014-26, to authorize the CAO to execute a standard agreement between the city and VDOT to administer a Safe Routes to School project that will provide improvements in the vicinity of Mary Munford and William Fox Elementary Schools. Land Use Housing and Transportation, March 18th, 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Ordinance 2014-27, to declare surplus and direct the conveyance of 210 North Belvedere Street to Monroe Park Campus Corporation for the purpose of facilitating the transfer of property to VCU to construct the Institute of Contemporary Art. Planning Commission, March 3rd, 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March 10. Ordinance 2014-28, to grant a conservation and open space easement on the property known as Bandi Field Park to the Friends of Bandi Field, Inc. Planning Commission, March 3rd, 1:30 p.m. Land Use Housing and Transportation, March 18th. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Ordinance— Ordinance 2014-29, to authorize the special use of 2613 and 2619 Floyd Avenue for the purpose of authorizing up to six single-family attached dwellings and a parking area. Planning commission, March 17th, 1:30 p.m. Council public hearing, March 24th. Ordinance 2014-30, to authorize a special use of 5805 Grove Avenue for the purpose of developing no more than four dwelling units for uses permitted in the urban business district. Planning commission, March 17th, 1:30 p.m. Council public hearing, March 24th. Ordinance 2014-31, to authorize the CAO to accept $199,824 from the U.S. Department of Justice and to appropriate to the Department of Justice Services for the purpose of providing funding for the expansion of the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program. Public safety, March 25th, 5:00 p.m. Council public hearing, March 14th. Resolution 2014-R24, to approve $250 from council district funds to pay Carleen Presents LLC for distribution of flyers to announced district residents. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R25, to approve $575.67 from council district funds to pay the Department of IT for printing of postcards for announced district residents. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R26, to appoint Sanford Bond to the Commission of Architectural Review. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R27, to appoint Larry Boyd to the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R28, to appoint Arthur Burton to the CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R29, to appoint Betsy Carr to CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R30, to appoint Brenda Curriton to the CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R31, to appoint Cora Dickerson to the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Board. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R32, to appoint T.G. Pinkney Epps to the CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R33, to appoint Jeffrey M. Gallagher to the Business Professional and Occupational License Tax Force. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R34, to appoint Rayford L. Harris Senior to the CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R35, to appoint Gerald Jason Hendricks to the Commission of Architectural Review. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R36, to appoint Bethany J. Miller to the CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R37, to appoint L.N.F. Robertson to the CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R38, to appoint Victoria A. Chavie to the Clean City Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Resolution 2014-R39, to appoint Michael Taylor to the CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. Next to the last, resolution 2014-R40, to appoint Carl J. Curriton to the CTE Commission. Council public hearing, March 10th. And lastly, resolution 2014-R41, to appoint Ara R.C. Junior to the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division. Council public hearing, March 10th. President, this concludes the new legislation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Unless there's any new or additional business, I will hit you with this thing. Yes, ma'am. This meeting is adjourned.
Well, seems like old times. We got here, finally got called to order at about 6:05, and what happened, because we did not have any pre-program, because the informal meeting went until 6:05, talking about amendments to the, what we call the ballpark paper. Now, then, as soon as they got done with that, they immediately went right into the regular meeting, so we just didn't have a chance to talk to you beforehand. But here's what happened tonight, mainly around one item. We'll go through the routine here. We got called to order at 6:05, everybody's here. Appointments, awards, presentations came on, then the agenda review and amendments, followed by a citizen's comment period, which lasted about 15 minutes, followed by a concerted agenda, which was about 10 minutes, and then we got to the one that we knew was going to be here. I'll tell you, the 20, almost 26 years I've been here, I don't think I've ever seen a turnout as large as a one tonight. They were in the aisles, they were backed, they even opened the main conference room for overflow and had the TV piped in there. So it was a large crowd, very enthusiastic crowd, both ways. This was the ballpark papers. Now, this did not say, okay, go start a ballpark tomorrow, or anything like that. We'll get that in just a second. Actually, all this did was it said, they're expressing support for further negotiations in connection with revitalized RVA, and that does include a new ballpark in Shackle Bottom. But when we got started, we had 34 people speaking against this paper, 1 hour and 15 minutes. Then we got time for those in favor, we have 42 people speaking, 1 hour 25 minutes. So 76 people spoke on the paper over a 2 hour 40 minute period. And then we got to the amendments. I'll try and make these as simple as I can. Amendment one, this was the administration, it's to increase the dollar amount. That was a clerical error, but the dollar amount went from 51,000, 51 million to 76,987,500. That approved 9-0. Second amendment by Councilman Newbill, ensuring the administration will make sure the money is there, bring documented financial commitments. That approved 9-0. Then we got to item number three amendment, Jonathan Bilalz amendment, that removes the word "moral obligation" and better delineates the builder's financial commitments. That approved by a 9-0 vote. Then we got to the one amendment that the President, President Samuels put together. This had many parts to it, but it concerned finances, it concerned ensuring protection of archaeological items, that they'll be safe, that would be paid for by an archaeological firm, updated the traffic study, and then a bold plan proposal process would have to be completed and provided to council prior to issuance of Shackle permits, and they must have significant citizen input. That one was defeated by a 4 to 5 vote. Then they got to discussions on the amended paper, and a lot of stuff talked went on, but Councilmember Graziano kind of summed it all up, said, what this paper is really all about is about getting information, and that's what this is. The mayor, even if this paper was rejected, could still go ahead and talk and negotiate with various concerns. So this didn't say yes, no, or anything. This was about getting information. When it came time for a vote, this was 4 hours and 20 minutes after it started. The vote was 6 to 3 in favor of the paper, the 3 dissenting votes coming from councilmembers Agelasto, Trammell, and Samuels. Now, Councilmember Trammell brought the point, why don't we have a referendum on this? Now, that was something that the crowd sitting here wanted to see, whether that would happen or not, we don't know, but that was one of her suggestions. So basically, where we stand now, well, continuing negotiations on March 27th. The mayor has due back with a more detailed plan to present to council members, and it will come back up again at our first meeting in April, I am sure. Then we got to the approval of minutes, reports of councilmembers, introduction of papers, and now, almost 6 hours after we came on the air, we are done for the night, and we'll see you again on March 10th. So till March 10th, fore gavel, gavel, I'm Dick Harmon. Good night.